Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. You can join the meeting in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive and also access the meeting via the live stream on the city's website. We welcome public participation, including public comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's websites. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator, and please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments. Without further ado, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept documents? Oh, forgive me, jumping. Ms. Beal, roll call, please.
Mr. Schnair.
Here.
Mr. Way.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Fishman.
Here.
Mr. Suplack.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
And Ms. Call is going to be late.
Yes, Ms. Call will be late. Now, a motion to accept them.
So move, second.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Here.
Ms. Fox. Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Suplack.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Schnair.
Yes. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and plating of property are under consideration. In such cases, city council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order... Do we do that now? Forgive me.
Sure, you can skip it because...
I'm sorry?
You can skip the meeting order because we're already... We only have administrative cases.
Got it. All right, so the swearing in of witnesses. Anyone intending to address the commission on any cases this evening, please stand and raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission? Thank you. We have three separate cases on the docket this evening, but all are associated with the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, the D cap. They will be heard together, and Jenny, the floor is yours.
As you mentioned, this is three applications tonight, and we're doing an informal review, so no decision being made tonight. Just wanting to bring forth our latest version for the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, MUR4, zoning code guidelines in area rezoning. And I'm going to go through a presentation to talk this through and share where we are and what updates have been made, and then, obviously, if there's a public comment, we'll share that. And then, the intent is to really go through each of the documents tonight in full, since we haven't had a chance to do that yet. So just a quick background reminder for everyone. So the Dublin Corporate Area Plan was adopted by council in 2018 and incorporates this larger yellow area, which is made up of four different districts within the Dublin Corporate Area Plan. Tonight, we're focusing on the code guidelines in rezoning for only the MUR4, which is shown in the red outline on your screen, which is... The district is MUR4, Llewellyn Farms Office District. So the plan recommendations within the Dublin Corporate Area Plan for MUR4 is looking at low-density office uses. Obviously, this area is adjacent to residential, so looking at building height limitations, increased setbacks, and landscape buffering. And then, there is one undeveloped parcel highlighted here in blue, which in the Dublin Corporate Area Plan is Site 11, that has more specific recommendations. Again, also indicating lower-density office, as well as building height and additional buffering requirements to buffer against the residential that's adjacent to this particular property. So as I mentioned, there's three parts to these amendments, which... The first is the zoning code, then design guidelines, and an area rezoning that allows us to implement these two documents once they're approved by city council. So we had an introduction in June, and then we had an informal review in July, and then we're here tonight, and then following tonight's meeting, depending on input and discussion, we could potentially proceed at a future meeting with Planning Commission's recommendation, which is made to city council, and city council is the final reviewing authority on that. And that would be then following Planning Commission's recommendation. So in terms of the MUR4 district and what we've done, we've developed, obviously, a code and guidelines that look to implement the area plan recommendations, ensuring an opportunity for viability for commercial property owners, while also ensuring that we're addressing adjacent residential property owner concerns as well. And the draft, as you'll see, between July and now is really trying to reflect that and the opportunity to work together between staff and those two groups is what's represented in the draft before you tonight. But prior to that, we had had several virtual meetings with commercial property owners and residential property owners in the development of this code and the guidelines. And as indicated in our July meeting and prior to that, prior discussions, obviously some challenges in ensuring that parcels that are abutting residential, that we're looking at those, and how those are being sensitive to that, while also then allowing for commercial property development as well. So how to weigh those pieces together as we move forward. So we've modified the code and the guidelines, as I mentioned, to reflect those discussions. And just to not lose sight of all the things we've done thus far, so along the way, we've really honed in on making sure that we're addressing lot sizes and frontages, setbacks, building heights, landscaping and buffering requirements, looking at the architectural design and window placement to ensure proper applicability adjacent to residential uses and use-specific standards. We've added those along the way to ensure the code is meeting the expectations of the plan, as well as then site design guidelines, stream corridor protection and stormwater, and then, obviously, making sure that the code includes a public review process for the Planning and Zoning Commission for the various cases that are outlined... Or, excuse me, case types that are outlined within the code. So the zoning code that's before you includes multiple sections, and I thought I would just highlight what those are generally, and then, when we go through this, we can review them in greater detail, but just to remind us what's within the proposed code. So the first section is the purpose and intent. That's obviously looking at how we're implementing the D cap area plan and how those are used in conjunction with the guidelines. We've had other recent amendments to the code and wanting to make sure that those two are very, very linked together and used in tandem, the guidelines and the code. So our code that's coming forward outlines that very specifically. In terms of uses, we outline the uses permitted, conditional, et cetera, only for MUR4. So you'll see in your draft, there's some blank areas for MUR1, 2, and 3. Obviously, we're not there yet, so once those districts come forward, we'll be adding to that. So we're only specifically looking at the MUR4 district uses. We also have some provisions in there for existing uses and how those are retained, as well as the expansion of them and how that's to be handled. That's pretty standard with our newest updates to ensure that we're not making properties non-conforming based on their uses, because that has financial implications to property owners. And as proposed, the uses within MUR4 are office, professional and technical training, research and development, banks, daycares, government services, and parks and open spaces. So that's what is currently contemplated as the permitted unconditional uses. And then, as I mentioned, we have some use-specific standards, so for particular uses that may have impacts outside of a normal, I guess, use and zoning, we have some additional standards in there, as well as then outlining if there's any accessory or temporary uses that should be included. From there, we go into the site development standards, which I will get into more detail as I talk through where we are currently with the code, but that's looking at general development standards, so lot sizes, widths, building heights, setbacks, parking locations, and then really looking at all the sort of design details. So architecture, landscaping, parking, signs, circulation, lighting. So all those typical zoning requirements are included within this draft code, again, to be sort of the one-stop shop. So if you have this zoning, you come to this document, and this is where you get all your requirements, so you're not searching around in the code for all your other requirements. And then, we have the review and approval process, which includes all the application types, and then outlines which required reviewing body looks at the various application types. So majority of them going to Planning and Zoning Commission with some minor projects staying with the administrative review team, but that's pretty minor, and I'll talk through... We've made some modifications to the minor project threshold based on some comments and concerns at the last meeting, so I'll talk that through here in a second. And then, the guidelines are looking at more design-related elements, so related to building design and site design, and then also making sure that any specific sub-district standards for MUR4 related to those are included in the guidelines as well. And then, the third part is the area rezoning. So in order to implement the code and the guidelines, we are recommending that the properties within MUR4 be rezoned from their current zoning, which is a combination of community commercial, suburban office, and a planned unit developments, that those be rezoned to MUR4, which would outline a more straightforward review process that's consistent with consistent standards, which provides some clarity to potential applicants and property owners. So as I mentioned, during our previous meetings, we have had some discussion, again, particularly related to the site outlined in blue, which is the NRI property, and how that relates to the Llewellyn Farms Civic Association and neighborhood that's adjacent to that. So there were some outlining of concerns consistently related to building heights, setbacks, and screening, and how we are going to handle that moving forward. And this particular property is the only undeveloped parcel within this area, and obviously, from a commercial development standpoint, wanting to understand the regulations and guidelines, and they had previously requested to be removed from MUR4. And that was all things that we had discussed at the July meeting. In addition to at that Planning Commission in July on the 8th, we reviewed the detailed history of this for the Planning Commission's understanding, as well as provided some comparison data related to adjacent commercial residential developments, so we could get a sense of what's happening elsewhere where there's single-family adjacent to commercial to give us some context for how the code should be drafted. We also then had shared at that time some capacity studies, so we could understand how that translates specifically to that vacant parcel, as well as landscape buffering information, and then a comparison chart about relating to the topics that we were still having in impasse related to the building height setback and landscaping. And then, the neighborhood at that time had asked some questions, and we reviewed those comments as part of the Planning Commission meeting. Overall, Planning Commission's discussion at the 8th was really sort of information finding, and then encouraging staff to try to work with the Llewellyn Farms Civic Association, as well as NRI, to try to come up with a compromise and a resolution to those outstanding issues. So we had the opportunity between that July meeting and the draft before you to meet on multiple occasions with all the parties to try to come up with a resolution, which we have and which is included within the draft that's before you. And I thought I might go through this chart. It's in your packet as well, if you're having trouble reading on the screen, but the chart shows the development standard that was of issue, what the current code says, what the draft code said in July, and then the green is the most important. So that's where we are today and what's reflected in the draft before you. So the front yard building setback, no changes were made to that. Both parties agreeing to that standard of 15 feet, so that's what's currently within the draft before you. The largest discussion was related to that next row, which is the... And the one below it, the side and rear yard building setbacks, and that then has a correlation to the building height, so those are interlinked together. So in the areas where property is a budding residential, for sub-area C, so sub-area C is that NRI property, the resolution was that a one-story building at a height of 22 feet could be located, or would be located, at a 75-foot setback, and that a two-story building would be supported at a height of 32 feet with a minimum setback of 95 feet. And that, again, is when you're abutting residential. And so in between that 75-foot setback and 95-foot setback, you could increase the building height up to that maximum of two stories or 32 feet at a ratio of... For every one foot of building height, you have to step back two feet. So you're getting... As you're getting taller, you're getting further and further, farther and farther back from that residential setback. So that was the resolution that both parties reviewed and agreed upon. When they're not... When the boundaries are not abutting a residential property, then that setback can be significantly less at 10 feet, again, because you have like uses next to each other. So it's really... The core concern was, obviously, when a commercial use is a budding residential, how do we handle that? But the ultimate agreement was that it would not exceed two stories, and it would not exceed 32 feet in height. And the way we drafted the code was whichever is less. So you could have a 32-foot tall building, but it can't be three stories. So there's no way to get any more stories or any more height. It's really limited to that particular standard. So that's the same for the side and the rear building setbacks. And then, for sub-area D, that's the area of Bradenton that abuts residential, so wanting to maintain the setbacks that are similar to what there are now. So there's a 25-foot setback when you're abutting residential, because those lots are much smaller, but that was a satisfactory resolution to that particular issue as well.
Jenny, can I...
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? On the one-to-two-foot ratio, when would that be used? Because if it can't be any higher than 32 foot, you wouldn't be able to use, like, get 33 foot by stepping back another two foot, or would you?
No. So it's ultimately happening between the 75-foot setback and the 95-foot setback.
Okay.
So you couldn't have... So again, the taller the building, so that 10 feet of difference between... So you could get a one-and-a-half story.
Right.
And then, that would have to be, depending on the height of that building, would have to be setback farther in order...
Okay.
So your setback's increasing as your height...
That's what I thought, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Then, the next category then was a pavement setback of 15 feet in the front yard. We didn't make any changes to that. That did not seem to be of issue to either party, so that remains the same. We did make changes to then the one below that, which is the side and rear pavement setback. So 25 feet is where we landed when it's a budding residential, and 10 feet if it's abutting a non-residential. So the previous version had 35, so there was some compromising on both sides to get to that 25 that everyone felt like that would... If the parking is located to the rear of the building, which I'll talk about here in a second, then that would give an adequate buffer in addition to then the building setbacks that were incorporated.
Real quick, Jenny, before you depart, the... I'm looking at the current code for the PUD suburban office. Just help us understand the 15-foot or the quarter of the sum of the building. Is it the lesser of the two, the greater of the two?
So at a minimum, in... Under the current code, it would have to be 15 feet, and most instances, it's going to be greater than that, because the building height, the sum of the building height and the length of that are going to increase that to be larger than 15 in most instances, so...
Got it. Thank you.
As is proposed, it's... We're not incorporating a calculation at this point, just to be more straightforward, because that's really hard.
Yeah, understood. I'm just trying to, you know, comparative from where we were to where we are is the reference. So I was trying to understand if that was the least of the two or the greatest of the two.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And then, the last four items here are then the landscape buffer, which we had significant discussion about, ultimately agreeing that 25 feet of an augmented landscape buffer with screening, a six-foot-tall opaque screening within that buffer would be acceptable. And we do have some language within the code about what's to happen within that 25-foot buffer, including the incorporation of existing trees. And I've had some recent questions or clarifications from the neighbors, which I included in your packet, and I'll talk that through here in a second, about, you know, how existing trees get incorporated in conjunction with this required buffer. And then, the building height piece of this is, again, as I previously outlined, is just really tied to the setback, so those sort of have to be duplicative in how they're explained within the code to make sure we're meeting all those requirements. And then, in terms of the permitted and conditional uses, there was some discussion about, you know, potentially expanding the uses, but in the end, we've left it with what currently was within the MUR4 code being retained. So office, training, research and development, daycare, those are the permitted uses. No addition of senior living or assisted living or anything like that. That was previously discussed as an option or a concern, so we wanted to make sure that that was clear. So everyone agreed to that. And then, we also had some changes to the parking standards related to office, so in terms of how people park and request to park their office buildings, we really were... The previous version had a much lower standard for office, but given the suburban nature of this particular... These particular sites, we really wanted that to be more in line with what the current code allows, so we increased the parking requirements for office and medical office to be more in line with what the rest of the code said. So everyone was amenable to that change as well, that more accurately reflects how development would occur anyway within this area. So within the code before you, then, we have outlined the code and the guidelines being updated to reflect then all these standards within the comparison chart. Then, I did make a couple modifications based on the previous conversation in July with concerning of mechanical screening and making sure that mechanical screening would not then be artificially increasing the height of the building. So your screening requirements would have to meet that maximum threshold of height. So you can't have a 32-foot-tall building and then mechanical screening on top that makes the building taller. So we've incorporated language for that. And then, I mentioned the office parking standards, and then there were some concerns about minor project thresholds. So under what circumstances is something considered a minor project? And I have included in the code that a minor project with an MUR4, the previous version was 10,000 square feet, so meaning a 10,000-square-foot building would have only gone to ART and been reviewed at ART. So I've reduced that number significantly to 3,500 square feet, so that larger development projects would be coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission, because that has a greater impact on surrounding characters. So we modified that as well to represent those concerns as well. And then, as I mentioned, I included within your packet some responses, questions, and then my responses to the questions related to concerns raised by the neighbors. So I'll go through those really quickly. So the first one was related to existing uses and what that means, and how the current draft of the code would allow in the instances where uses are existing under the SO code. So if the SO code would allow additional uses, then the MUR4 code would permit. If something exists, they'd be able to retain that, and there was concern about, does that mean then there are certain uses within SO that the new code doesn't permit, such as a park-and-ride, and would that be allowed to be retained? So the answer would be yes. If an existing... If a site has an existing use, if the site is undeveloped or nothing is happening there, then they don't have existing uses, so that would have to comply with the new current code standards. And in all instances, if a new development is going through a process, that's going to come before you. So something such as a park-and-ride, that's a conditional use. So if, for some reason, a property that has existing uses would ever want to contemplate that, that would have to come before the commission and meet all the criteria of a conditional use. So that's... That would have that public review notification process, all those types of things where people would be able to come in if there were concerns or complaints. Those could be mitigated as part of that process. And then, there were some questions about the daycare uses, and could that be misconstrued as an assisted living facility? And as the code defines those, no. Those are two completely different uses with different standards, and what would be considered that? So an adult daycare would not be considered assisted living, so that would not... Should not be an issue. And then, there was some concern about a reference to the Ohio Revised Code. And again, the Ohio Revised Code has some protections for daycare uses, so that's why that reference is in there. Again, looking at a review process. If somebody would want to build a daycare, that would have to come, you know, be reviewed as part of any new development project if it meets that, those thresholds, so... And then, there was also related to outdoor recreation areas for child daycare. The current use-specific standard is looking at a 50% requirement for opacity for the screening of those outdoor recreation areas. That is consistent with how other daycares are handled through the city, so we were not recommending that it be greater. The residents were expressing some interest in 100% opacity. So again, we can talk about that as part of your review tonight. We were keeping it consistent with what the current code, such as SO or other uses, or excuse me, development text would outline. And then, related to building height, there was some concern about, as it's been drafted, that it would be the two-story or 32 feet, whichever is less, as that maximum height. And there was some concern about whether that could be misconstrued to allow a three-story building. That was not my intention. And again, the way I drafted it also says it's a maximum of two stories. So again, I think we can look at that tonight and see if anyone else reads that differently, because that was not the intent, to allow a three-story building. Pretty clear that, particularly for that sub-area C, that two stories is the maximum height there, so... And then, as I mentioned, then there was some discussion and concern about the landscape buffer and wanting to make sure that allowing existing trees to be counted towards the required landscape buffer, that that didn't result in an inadequate landscape buffer, and that clearly was not the intent. The code, as it's drafted, includes a requirement that talks about a 25-foot buffer, and then it specifies X number of trees per linear feet, a mix of tree types, planting. So you have to have a buffer requirement and has to meet these specifications. We do have a clause in there that says existing trees could count towards that. And again, based on our discussions, my understanding was we wanted to preserve those existing mature trees. We would not want a developer to come in and cut down all the mature trees, so they would then have to meet the new buffer requirements by planting new trees. So our intent was to try to preserve that and use that existing healthy, mature vegetation to count towards the buffer to make... But in the end, the buffer still has to meet that requirement of the one per 20 linear feet, I believe it says. So... And if a site is developed, and it's a new building, new site, and it's over that 3,500 square-foot threshold, they're going to be coming before Planning and Zoning Commission, and we would be able to make sure that, even if it's going through ART, they would be required to submit materials about what the buffer looks like, how we're preserving existing trees, what the condition of those are, how they're meeting the requirements. So all of that would be able to be vetted, and if additional things need to be required as part of that review, we could do that as part of that. So again, our intent was to try to balance that. And again, within a 25-foot-wide buffer, you can only plant so many trees that are going to survive. So we're trying to balance all those pieces and parts. So again, totally up for discussion, and if people have different ideas about how to handle that, I'm definitely willing to discuss that. And then, the last couple things are administrative departures do allow for modifications to the standards, and there's concern about someone coming forward and asking for a building height that exceeds the maximum permitted. And again, as is currently written, property owners would have the ability to make that request. Whether you would grant that or not is up to you all. However, if part of our discussion tonight is we don't want to even allow a waiver, administrative departure, to even contemplate exceeding the building height, we can discuss that and figure out if there's a better solution to that, if we don't even want to have that as a question. So again, the intent was not to necessarily provide a loophole for somebody to have a taller building. It's just that's procedurally, you know, we want people to have the opportunity to ask for relief for standards when they need it, so... And then, there were some clarifications about mechanical screening, some word choices to make sure that that mechanical screening doesn't increase the building height, which I think is an easy fix on our end, and then concern about... There also within that screening... And then concern about, there also, within that screening requirement, there's an exemption for sustainable equipment. And part of that was I need to get a little more feedback about what the concern is. Is the concern there, they don't, the residents don't want alternative energy equipment? Or they will allow it, but it has to be screened, which to me then gets to some functionality concerns? Or is it they just don't want, if you're using sustainable, like ground, or, excuse me, building-mounted solar, you don't want that to increase the building height? So depending on what the concern is, I think we can address that fairly easily. I just need to understand the intent of that a little more. And then last but not least, is the parking plan and some concerns about, under the parking plan, a minor project would be permitted in the instances where a change of use would require more parking. And resident concern was related to, that could potentially result in something that has significant community impacts. And addressing that, and I think the concern was whether or not we should allow that instance to be a minor project or something, or it should be elevated to another application type. So that's another one I need a little bit more clarification on, understanding what the actual concern is so I can address that properly. So, sorry, all my talking here. So that is all I have. As I mentioned, we're really interested in the board's feedback tonight, and no decision needed tonight or requested, really just want the opportunity to go through the code and the guidelines and get your comments so we can, when we move forward, we're making sure we're addressing everything. So with that, I am done with my presentation unless anybody has any questions.
Question for Thad, actually. Thad, I didn't read the case numbers verbatim. Do I need to?
No, you do not. These are all legislative matters, so if it were administrative or quasi-judicial, I'd probably have a different answer, but for these purposes, no need to read them aloud, and they're reflected on the agenda.
Got it. Thank you. I know there was additional comment, I think additional comments in our coffers from public.
I did receive, yes, one particular comment here. Let's see here. That was included in your packet, and then, I don't know if we have any additional.
And/or has any more come in?
Okay. We have, Nikki's saying that we have no additional comments being provided, other than the one that was within your packet. Do you want me to read that one, or everyone feels?
Sure.
Okay. So I received this via email. So it says, "We are not in agreement with this settlement concerning Llewellyn Farms, Phase One. This is not good for our neighbors. It is being forced on us, on those who are trying to help. Very few in Phase One are in favor of this. They should build with the restrictions they currently have. The people pushing to change must have hidden interests. It's getting, and is getting something out of this." And this is from T.L. Darling, is who I received this from.
And is there, are there any more members of the public in attendance that want to Welcome. Please state your name and address for us.
Sven Christensen, 5765 Settler's Place. So, it's all of these last heights, your comments, Sven. How should you feel about this agreement? Those of you not here, watching at home, I would say it's good. It's good for a couple reasons tonight.
Would you like me to start over?
I can.
That's all right. I practiced that last part. Sven Christensen, 5765 Settler's Place. I said that I've been receiving calls and questions as they walk by the house, and they said, "Sven, what should we do on this latest draft of MUR4? And should we be happy?" And I said, "Yes, we should." And I finished it up again last night at 2:00 AM, riveting reading the draft code. But when you read it, there are things that say, even in the exception side, as long as it's consistent with the land use, the de-cap in the MUR4 guidance, that's operating of this. And if you read it, it has all the things we've talked about over the years. It talks about lighting that doesn't impact the neighbors, it talks about landscaping that doesn't impact the neighbors. Our last big rocks that we've been negotiating have been distance back to make it more similar to what you'd have with your neighbor across the street before you'd have a building right next to you. And I want to thank NRI for coming to the table, and they've said they needed to have some flexibility. They feel like they're flexible. We're still going to hope that they're going to continue with their goodwill as they proceed with their clients. I want to thank the city for multiple drafts and going through this to get us today. And the planning and zoning, I would say, of Dublin is one of the best things here. It's arduous, it's frustrating, it's time-consuming, but it's a competitive advance to the community to have it well thought out. I think as we benchmarked situations in Dublin where residential is near commercial, there aren't that many places where it takes place. So this is the toughest type. This is the part that needs to be worked out the most, and putting it in writing and putting it in code is a way to make it happen. So I appreciate the work. I know the neighbors appreciate the work that you guys are doing to keep Dublin great and to keep constituents at peace, even if they have different interests. So we thank you for that. I know that Jenny has answered, I think, some of the questions that came in. I think our association president, John, is still running late. I know we had one last communication with you, Jenny, so if you maybe would address his, if you haven't. And then I think Clay has some landscaping clarifications we'd like done. And I think the spirit of what we have in paper of keeping the existing, whether it's even top class or low class, but does the blocking in the landscaping buffer, I think we'd like having it there. I think it's a matter of the count in 20 feet and trying to make sure that that 25 feet, with all the restrictions of trees and growth and what they need, to still do what they're intended to do in the spirit of MUR4, which is to block things. So thanks to everybody's involvement, and we're looking forward to the fine-tuning, and we're looking forward to the economic development that comes with it and the refresh. There's no doubt keeping Dublin growing and refreshing and maximizing our space for the residence and the commercial is what we want, so thanks this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sven. We're at discussion.
Is there anybody else?
Anyone else? Forgive me. Oh. Hold on just a second. We got to swear you in. I got to find the right piece of paper. Please, please raise your right hand, answer in affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Clay Dany, 5775 Settler's Place. Thank you, everybody, for having me this evening. I just wanted to try and provide a little bit of context for the landscaping concerns that I think some of the neighbors still have, including myself. Obviously, the 25-foot landscape buffer, it's not very deep. You know, when you have large trees like we have in Dublin, there's just not many of them that can fit within a 25-foot range. And so it makes it difficult, you know, initially, the landscape buffer, we were hoping it would be, you know, maybe 35 feet because that could allow maybe two rows of trees. And so when it was reduced to 25, the pushback that we've kind of gotten is that, well, you can't plant much there. And we say, "We know." But we're left with 25 feet, so I would just ask that we do the best that we can there. You know, there's, there's houses with two-year-olds and four-year-olds in the backyard, and there's going to be, you know, potentially a 32-foot tall building there, not all that far away. So I would just ask that we firm up the language to make the landscape buffering as strong as it possibly can be, given the constraints that we have. And the area that we live in, in Llewellyn Farms, is very interesting because there's some legacy trees there that are probably 100, 125 feet tall. They've been there for a long time. And so they're established and they're big, which is great. But when you think about buffering, you want to make sure that line of sight is a consideration. And so with those trees, they happen to be, the actual leaves on the trees don't occur until about 40 feet up. And so when you look at it, you see that's a big tree, but then all you actually see is a big tree stump or the trunk of the tree going up vertically. So there's actually no coverage. And so if we're saying we want to keep the old trees, which we absolutely do, but we also want landscape buffering, those two things actually go counter to each other, this is a very crude drawing, but I just want to kind of show you all what we're talking about here. So that's in regards to landscaping. The other piece is the. That work? Okay. So then on the other piece, the permitted conditional uses, the wording, in my opinion, is still a little bit ambiguous. And so, in the code, it says, I can just read it, "All uses in buildings that were permitted or conditionally permitted under the zoning applicable to the property immediately prior to its rezoning into the MUR4 zoning district shall continue to be allowed as permitted or conditionally permitted on the property, including the following." So Jenny was kind enough to do some digging on that, and she clarified that if there isn't existing, if there is not an existing use occurring on that property at this point in time, once MUR4 takes effect, the new MUR4 code takes precedence. But the way I, you know, there could be some misinterpretation of the way that the wording sits today because it says permitted. Permitted is a term that can mean to grant or to allow, but it also is a technical kind of legal term that means that you have a formal permit to do something. And so I don't know if there's a way to use a different term there where it's more clear so that somebody 10, 15, 30 years down the road that's looking at this code has zero misconception about that. So yeah, that was that one. And then, oh, and then the building height, the whichever is less language, I've always taken issue with that slightly. I know that it's with the best intentions that that language exists, but again, I'm thinking down the road, if somebody looks at it from an outsider's view, how could it be misinterpreted? So from my perspective, somebody could potentially argue, you know, there's a development, it could be two stories tall, but each story is 20 feet. That's a 40-foot tall building. That's, that's one situation. Then the alternate situation would be, okay, it's, it's actually going to be three stories, but it's under 32 feet. It's three stories, but it's under 32 feet. When looking at it from the two options, you could technically say the 32-foot tall building is less than the 42-foot, than the 40-foot building. And so I know it's a stretch, but I don't want there to be any opportunity for misinterpretation there. So I think just striking the whichever is less language, or potentially just putting a line item in there that says, "In no situation or circumstance can this building exceed 32 feet. In no circumstance can it ever be three stories." That would just be very clear, and I don't think it would, I don't think it would be an issue. And so I think that's pretty much all I had. I'm super grateful for the city that I live in. I'm thankful for all of you. I'm thankful for NRI, my neighbors. I mean, this has been a long haul, and I'm grateful for all the work that everybody's put into it. I think we're in the final inning here, and I'm just hopeful that, you know, everybody can be marginally pleased with the outcome. So thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
Mr. Supalak? Just very briefly, I, the gentleman's name has just slipped my mind, but would it be possible for him to provide a copy of the figure that he showed to everybody so that that can be included in the record? Okay.
Is that an email to?
I would suggest an email to either, perhaps to Ms. Beal.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right. Any additional comments? Now we're to discussion. Anyone want to kick us off?
I just have one question for staff. I heard you say that they could, in the future, they could receive a waiver with approval of, for height, with approval of this board. Was that, did I hear that correctly?
So within the draft code, we have included the allowance for waiver requests or administrative departures, depending on what the request is. So yes, there would be an opportunity for that.
Yeah, I don't know that, because this agreement has been hammered out by the developer and the residents. Somebody 10 years from now really wouldn't have the appreciation for that on this board. And so I don't know why we would allow a waiver or request for a waiver. Waivers are never good for the resident, for their agreement. So I would, I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel, but I would like to delete that, that they, that the right to have a waiver.
And I, if I may ask a clarifying question. So waivers for everything?
Well, the height, I think you talked about the height of the building.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
I think that's, that's been a big sticking point with the residents, and the developer has agreed. And so I think that, as I said, it'd be easy for somebody 10 years down the road to not have an appreciation for what the residents have been through.
Okay.
Does anybody disagree? I mean.
Yeah, I'd be curious.
A waiver, clarify, a waiver is a common part of code portions like this. That's not to say we don't, we don't, we don't ever take it lightly, we don't grant them with ease, but they are commonly present.
Yeah, so it would be a deviation from what the code would, would permit, so that you would have the opportunity to weigh all the, and there's criteria for which you would grant a waiver, that you would have to identify. But again, we could look at, if the commission is all in agreement, that you don't want any waivers to be granted to height, we could definitely look at how to craft that or an administrative departure. And again, is it for this entire MUR4? Is it for properties that are abutting? I mean, I think we need to, I'd like a little more dialogue about how specific we're getting here. Because this code is meant to apply to all of the MUR4 districts, not just MUR4. So this has far-reaching impacts, so I just want to make sure we're talking that through.
And I guess they could go through, if something changed radically, they could go through a rezoning and have it changed, right?
Well, since we're setting up a standard district, they would not, unless they, I guess they wanted to rezone to a PUD, and then you would have to go through that process. But the goal of this is to set up the standards, and the waiver is a mechanism with which to ask for something different than what the code would outright permit, so.
All right. It would seem to me that the language is fairly clear with all the standards we've set, and having the ability to have requests from any property owner for a waiver would be somewhat to an administrative remedy, saying, hey, well, I, I would like to, you know, see if there's some consideration out there. Even though the language is already clear that they can't do something, at least they can be heard, and the likelihood of that being approved is virtually zero because the language is pretty clear. So I think if you don't allow this opportunity for somebody to be heard and shot down, then that might make it too inflexible, I think. But it seems the underpinning language to me is rather clear, and I don't know, maybe our attorney could address that and some, from his experience.
So I think, I think that there is something to be said for that ability to have some flexibility. And as you're familiar with in the Bridge Street code, for example, that waiver procedure is available and is often done to improve projects, or at least improve them in the, you know, mutual understanding of the commission, the applicant, and staff. My understanding is that this would operate in a similar fashion and provides. My understanding is that this would operate in a similar fashion and provides a different set of criteria, and this is, this is what I think is important. The waiver is a different set of criteria, different standard than, for example, a variance, because you'd still have that variance sort of pressure valve in the event of something that is a unique hardship. But A, those variances would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. B, those are not so much about improving a project as a whole, or accommodating perhaps certain deviations from code to get us a better whole. They are really for somebody who is in a tight spot and has an impossible piece of property to work with. So the waiver really is sort of an intermediary step, and, and would come back before this board and have the, more of the planning considerations to, to act as criteria for its approval or disapproval.
Jane?
I think a couple of things that, that I wanna bring up. One, we don't very frequently have a budding residential and commercial. There aren't hardly any around. And historically, council has always treated these extremely sensitively, because we don't have that many, and gone out of our way to make sure they don't negatively impact the This has been arduous, because we have empowered the neighborhood to get together and try to work this out. And I, I don't really think we're absolutely there yet. But one of the things that I worry about is, one, I think when we talk about sensitivity to a budding residential, I think in the description, so that we don't have any lost history when the next planning and zoning group of people sit here, we need to describe what it means to be sensitive to a budding residential, exactly what that means. These setbacks shouldn't be waived easily. These heights should not be waived easily. Landscape buffers should not be waived easily. And why we don't waive them? Because we have a budding residential. I personally think you don't waive anything unless you have the agreement by the abutting property owner to increase a height, or increase a setback, or to increase a landscape buffer. If the abutting property, excuse me, owner does not agree with it, and you've already set it down, I don't think you change it, just because it's difficult for the, the building developer, because he has a constrained site. This is a constrained site. We already know that. Not that it's just this site. I'm just talking about any abutting residential. The other thing is, I, when it comes to height, I noticed on roofs that we have, if you go to the section on roofs, it goes from a 612, 612 to a 1212. If you put a 1212 roof on a two-story building, you have a really high roof, right? So I think one story, 612, or 1212, I'm not an architect, so I have to ask that question, two-story flat roof. That way, you'll never get above that height. In fact, you'll keep that height lower, because height is measured from the ground to the middle of the eve. So think about how much more there is above the middle of the eve. If you go to a flat roof on a two-story building, they still get their two-story building, they still get their height when they want in the stories on the first and second floor, 'cause they all want a 10 to 12-foot ceiling. And I, on my drive over here, I looked to see just how many commercial buildings had hip roofs. They don't. They have flat roofs. So this gets you way down to exactly 32 foot and no higher. So I think you take out the 1212. Landscape buffer? I can recall that we had our landscape architect tell us that you needed 35 foot to really get a decent landscape in there. And I worry that if you're going to leave in existing trees, and you can take the parking lot all the way to it, are you gonna destroy the root line of existing trees by doing so? I don't know. So I'd like to hear what the commission thinks about a 35-foot landscape buffer. And, um, seems like I haven't, I think I have more, but those two, those are the ones that really, that I really think we need to look at, is a flat roof, the width of the landscape buffer, and making sure that we say that we don't waive on a budding residential unless it's agreed to by the abutting property owner.
Clarification. Building height is to the highest point.
It depends on the roof type. So flat, yeah, so pitched roof is to the midpoint. Yeah.
Can I chime in on that point? So I think the benefit of having language in here about sloped roofs, especially in a situation where you have offices up against residential, is I think the roof, the hip roof or the, gives it more of a residential feel. And that if it was a flat roof, it would have a totally different feel. So I really support the idea that we're promoting, that, you know, the 6 to 12 was the minimum and the 12 to 12. And, you know, I think it'd have to be, every situation's gonna be different, so I don't think it's gonna be that much of a difference in height, if you, between 612 and 1212. That would, but it's the idea that you do have a sloped roof, and it looks more residential.
You know, I agree, Kim. I wanna, I wanna ask you about that, because as I drove over here, I think of the Mezzo building at the corner. It's two-story, and then it's got a very steep roof, which makes it just soar in height at the corner. So as, and when I drove over here, I, I looked to see, and I saw most of the commercial buildings had flat roofs, and I thought that would maintain, at least keep it at 32 foot, because height is their issue. Is it better to, and that's a question I would ask the abutting resident, property owners here at Clay and Sven, is it better to have the look of a transitional, or is it better to have a limitation on height at exactly 32 foot instead? I would ask you that question. I, I get where you're coming from, Kim, and I understand that. I'm just wondering if height is the issue, which is the better option.
Thank you, Sven.
Thanks for the direct question, Jane. Again, I think if, if we're talking about looming was the word we've been using, and blocking the sun when you're in the backyard, real height is real height. So I think your discussion about keeping it a cap is probably beneficial. Thanks. I sat next to my friends at NRI. They said that's all they have anyway. Is that correct? You could probably build a spec, but that's what their normal inventory is.
That would be your, that would be your preference, is a flat roof at 32 than having a hip roof at possibly anything above 32 with the peak?
I, I think your analogy was pretty good on that one.
Okay.
Mr. Supalak, if I could have you proceed.
Lance, you wanna chime in here?
Couple points with respect to the waiver. That's a, that's a process that's sort of ingrained in administrative law, and I would not wanna, I don't wanna create an exception for having exceptions. That's why we have, what is it, 27 amendments to the Constitution? Things do change, and to lock a governing body, quasi-governing body such as this into one set of circumstances, the record is the record. Maybe no one will remember what, isn't that, no one will remember what happened here. I think that's from the Gettysburg Address. But, but, you know, there is a legacy, and I do believe the individual rights would be adequately protected, and just, just bothered by, let's, you know, let's do this part differently, and, and not have any possibility to reopen it. Second point, Jane, could you comment? I thought some of the, many of the comments, and I appreciate all the work that's been done by everybody here, but the specific comments on language, some of the, changing some of the language, what's your, what's the staff's position on that? Because it sounded reasonable, although I think there needs, would need to be some wordsmithing on some of it.
You, you had a list at some point in front of us. Is it possible that is the good reference list to sort of walk through some of Lance's Richard Barrington?
Is this where your, this comparison chart, I mean, this is what, no, something different?
Well, it was the, there was some, I don't know if it was proposed language specifically or just generally, but I think we, if, if and when appropriate, we should discuss those, those changes.
Okay. The ones that the residents raised, is that what you're?
Yes. And I'm sorry, missed your name.
Mr. Danny? Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like these two slides are the list that kind of you walked through and sort of articulated. One, a little bit of their comment. Two, a little bit of potential adjustment on, some of them were very, you know, language, wordsmithing type of things.
So yeah, in terms of the questions and clarifications related to existing uses, from a staff recommendation, I would retain it as it's currently written. That is very consistent with our other zoning code amendments, whether it's Bridge Street or the Historic District. And again, that has a lot of implications to property owners from a financial perspective. If we're making things non-conforming, that is really challenging. And from a legal perspective, that's how, how we handled that in those instances before. So my recommendation would be to leave that as, as it's currently written within the code.
And to clarify, moving forward, if, if we, for all intents and purposes, grandfather current uses, there are the standard set of triggers that if there are changes in the future, the standard set of triggers that cause them to come back to planning and zoning.
Right. So if something was previously zoned CC, and there was a use that's currently operating on a parcel that has that community commercial zoning, and there's a whole nother list of uses that are permitted, they could, they could use one of those uses. If they were gonna redevelop their building, build a new building, some of those things, then those would come before you for your review and approval. And if something was a conditional use before, that would also be coming forward. So again, there are mechanisms for those things to be coming forth as part of a public review process. And the, and the uses, just, I guess maybe to sort of assuage some of your concerns, are not dramatically different. So I mean, community commercial does allow for some additional things than the code would currently allow, but those are further away from the residential uses as well. So I think that helps to mitigate those consequences.
Better question. Do we know of a use that upon adoption of this code is not compliant, would have to be grandfathered in?
I have, let me find, I can find the list. I mean, and see what's different. I mean, again, it's more commercially oriented, so those would potentially have a little bit, there would be more of those than the suburban office. That's much more compatible.
I just wanna clarify, Jenny, let's say we have a building that's MUR4, and they're, they're, they're having a use that is permitted under CC. They don't redevelop, they don't, they don't renovate, they don't do anything. We pass MUR4 uses. They decide they don't want that use anymore. So what you're saying is, they can go, they can still do CC uses as long as nothing in their building changes? Is that correct?
That would be correct. There might be instances where your change of use would require more parking, or some additional screening requirements. So there are triggers then if there's additional use-specific standards or things within the code that would have to be met. So they would have to, they would have to mitigate that as part of the use of that property.
Is there a criteria that one would look at, let's say, that would, that would impact a neighborhood negatively, or impact the intent or purpose of the MUR4? Is, is, are they vague criteria? Are they, are there criteria that you would say, no, you cannot continue to have that use? Or just all uses that were in CC, as long as the building didn't change, or there was no addition to the structure? If there's an addition to the structure in order for a new use, that would trigger it? Is that correct?
Depending on what, I guess, so if it's a minor, a minor project would be if they're making modifications that are up to 3,500 square feet. A minor project would go to ART. Anything over that would come before Planning and Zoning Commission. So again, there's the threshold of what's a minor project versus a final development plan. So depending on what they're doing, it would be reviewed. It's just who is it reviewed by?
Okay. But for those, I think you, you pulled out, I think you did, and I'll have to look at it again. Anything abutting residential goes back to planning and zoning, no matter what, any waiver, any administrative waiver?
So...
I think so. I just wanna be sure.
Sorry, I wanna get to my right page here. I wanna speak on a turn. So we had for minor projects, development of mixed-use or non-residential principal structures of 3,500 square feet or less and associated site improvements within MUR4. That's, that's a minor project. Any additions or modifications to principal structures under that 2,500-square-foot modification, that would come, that would be a minor project. So anything over those two thresholds would then come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did not say that any development of any kind that abuts residential comes before Planning and Zoning Commission. We did not ma, I did not make that modification.
Okay. I would suggest that would be a modification we make.
I apologize, Jenny. Could you clarify the 3,500 from the 2,500?
So one is the development of a brand-new building, and then one is the addition of a...
And the addition is the 2,500?
Yeah.
The lesser of the two.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was trying to keep that scope limited, based on the conversation we had last time, was we don't want larger buildings to be handled at administrative level, that that really rose to the level of, of a more formal public review by the Planning Commission.
Appreciate it.
Jenny, forgive me before we move on from this, and I just, maybe I just wanna clarify the way I heard it. How about this? We're not grandfathering in one parcel. If there is a current use that is acceptable under the current, forgive me, CC, CC code, community commercial code, right? Whatever that is, once this goes into effect, they, for all intents and purposes, are grandfathered in until a said point that they have change of use or trigger. But they cannot change from one CC use to another CC use.
They could do that. They could go from one use that's permitted in CC to another, as long as they were currently operating, a use exists on their site that is compliant under the previous code. And that is, I mean, that's consistent with Bridge Street. So there are many instances in Bridge Street where uses, properties were zoned, community commercial, or neighborhood commercial, or any number of existing zoning. Again, this is a very rare occurrence. I'm not saying it never happens, but it's, it's usually a pretty minor change that we've seen thus far with the standards in place.
And how do the, maybe the separate question then, how does the CC uses overlap with the MUR4 uses?
So the community commercial are much more retail-oriented, so it would be a retail uses. That would be the most difference between the two of them, whether it's eating and drinking, apparel, things like that would be, would be permitted. Grocery stores, those types of things would be permitted there. Again, the standards for that would be different than potentially what is existing on the site, so that would potentially trigger development stand, or, excuse me, development site modifications that would then trigger a review process, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, offices are also permitted under CC. Personal services, and then there's a list of conditional uses, but those, as I mentioned before, have to go through, would have to go through a process, a Planning and Zoning Commission review process.
Can you bring up your list? Can you bring up your list again? Lance, you asked for sort of walking, potentially walking through the language and adjustments. Was this where you thought we were going?
I thought the comments. What was the, the use of permit? How, just to go through the code, if it permanently defined terms, the point was that it could be, and being of us.
I couldn't see anything. Question was raised about would the use of word permit, could it be construed in a, in a confusing way? So, and it is used in here. When I was leading through to see if permit is a defined term, then it, we wouldn't have to modify it. Otherwise, I think the point was well taken.
So, I honestly do not know if we have a definition in our general zoning code. I'm looking for it here for permitted use, but as a general matter for purposes of planning and zoning law, permitted use has a specialized meaning in that it is a use allowed as of right. This language of something being, of existing uses being permitted in that context then has that, that connotation. It's allowed as of right. And the reason that we have developed this existing use type of language, both as proposed here and as exists in the Bridge Street District, is to avoid the alternative, which is an existing use that would become non-conforming upon change of zoning, and the consequences that go along with non-conforming, with having a non-conforming use or a non-conforming site. The idea being that having existing uses remain quote-unquote permitted for purposes of zoning would allow, or at least would facilitate the user continuing to have the ability to get financing for the use, continue to invest in it, rather than, rather than encountering hurdles that can be placed for people who have non-conforming sites. So that is a, a long answer to what I think you had was a short question, but I, from a legal perspective, I do not see a problem with leaving the language as proposed. I don't think that it is something that would be subject to abuse or to successful arguments to go to some more general sense of something being permitted. And I would be concerned that if we change it, and then we have different standards between this code and the Bridge Street District code, we would start to run into unintended consequences.
Thank you. The, the only other language was about the buffer, which is less about language than it is about discussion about what we want to do. Lance convinced me that, that, from what he said, that, and I said that it should be irrevocable as far as the height changing. I, I think he's right, but I think we should make it real clear why the height was 32 in, in, in the text of the ordinance, because I think he's right that the principal thing, you, you always want people to have the right to do something. So I, I agree with that. The other thing is the flat roof. I think you've got to kind of think about what you wish for before you do it. The sloped roof, the 1212 especially, has a wonderful residential look. And, and when you put flat roofs on all those buildings, if you can picture that, you're going to look like you have a industrial or commercial area there over time. So I think that you might want to think about that carefully before you limit it, because you, the whole idea is you want this to blend in with the residential development. So those two things. But I, I think Lance convinced me, and I would, I changed my mind about that. So everybody else can.
Thanks, Warren, for the follow-up on it. I do have a question. If, I, I was under the impression that a sloped roof might actually, with a midpoint at the middle, it would make it taller than 32 feet. So that was the part of the discussion. I don't disagree. If we could have everything, we'd want a top of the roof at 32 feet with a residential sloped roof if we could have it. But if, but if we're just doing height versus height, I think that was the comparison. But I would agree with you. That would be more in like with what's occurred in the suburban office area in the past would be the sloped roof. It's a preferred look. But if it would be allowing something to go another six feet, would that be the correct, is that correct? It would go to 38 feet with the 1212, if I'm following the...
1212 is, is the steepest. But, but that's the best looking, and that's the most residential looking.
It is. It is.
So you got to kind of decide what you wish for there.
Can I ask for a clarification? So the, the measuring of the height, yes, it's to the center of the roof eaves, right? But it's also from the grade, wherever the, the grade could be sloping away.
Right.
So the, the measurement is, is variable based on grade, right? And then the type of roof you have. So it's, it's a difficult measurement to zero in on and say it's going to be this.
Right.
Is that correct, Jen?
That is correct. So, so building height is the vertical distance measured from the grade to the highest point of the coping of a flat roof, to the deck line of a mansard roof, or to the mean height level between the eve and ridge of a gable hip gambrel roof, unless otherwise specified by this chapter.
Can I keep going? So that's, that was just my, my roof question. I wanted to talk about the buffer, because I do, there is some subtleties in here that we might be able to clarify. One, I guess I wanted to make the point that the existing code is a six-foot buffer, right? So we're going from six feet to 25 feet in the, in the agreed-to plan. 35 feet would be, you know, what was recommended would be better. But if this is a compromise, I think 25 feet is still a reasonable dimension, that you can achieve the type of buffer that I think we want to achieve in 25 feet. The existing tree issue is interesting, because as the gentleman pointed out, that big, mature trees just have a trunk, and, and they're not really screening anything. But I believe that the, that the screen, the six-foot screen, which has to be solid, would achieve that opacity that we're trying to achieve. So those big trees are not carrying the weight of buffering. They're just, you know, absolutely, we need to protect our trees. I think that's, that's really important. But I think it's this other layer, this other buffer that gives you that, that more opaque kind of screening that you want. And I think, I don't know if, Jane, you brought this up or not, but, you know, all trees have a drip line, right, which is the spread of the crown of the tree and where the water drips off. And a lot of places actually place a protection on the drip line of trees. And that might be something that we could add to this, because if there's a 50-year-old tree there that has this incredible spread and probably has a, has a root system that matches that, that you would want to protect, you wouldn't want to pave over it. You wouldn't want something to damage the roots because that would damage the tree. So that, that might be another consideration. And I guess there's a question in there. Is there anything in the city landscape code about preservation of drip lines of trees on, when you're trying to save a tree?
I don't, I have to look over talking here. I don't think there's something that specifically speaks to that in particular. Again, we would want to, if there's significant trees as part of the review of a development project, we would want to account for those and make accommodations for a site plan that if there's, you write some large landmark tree, that we're taking every step we can to try to preserve that.
Right.
As part of that application.
So in that language where it talks about preserving existing trees, it could be something about preserving the drip line and the root system of the tree to that extent. And then I have one other question, thinking a little bit broader about parking. And, you know, here we are, we're setting, this is setting, you know, a, a standard and a future. And, you know, what everybody's finding in the pandemic is that the role of offices is going to change, the density of offices is going to change. And the four per thousand for office is a, is an old standard and likely to go down. And I think, I mean, we're experiencing that everywhere, where, where office density is going down. People are working more from home. And I just wonder if we keep adopting this preservation of this standard for parking, that we're going to end up, again, still with more parking and more surface area and paved area than we need. So I'm not sure that we could, I think that's a bigger discussion, perhaps, citywide, because, and we're looking at other areas of, that this impacts also. So I would just question the parking, that, you know, is there, is there another newer standard that we might be thinking about?
So, and I apologize. I, I hope it was expressed, but I was trying to get here from the airport as fast as possible. This is the first time we've seen the text. However, we have three items on the agenda tonight to move on. As we have proven in the past, we, as a commission, pay attention to or are drawn to different sections based on our backgrounds, based on our familiarity with the code, et cetera. And Ms. Fox and I were, were discussing here just briefly, would it, I understand it's already 8 o'clock, but would it be worth the investment in time to go through the code from the beginning, the, the draft code that we've all read before, we've all read multiple times before, and just highlight as a commission, so that when one, one person is calling out, you know, this, and, you know, other people are saying, okay, I could do that. But we don't look in silos, we look as a whole. And we look to make sure that the code is cohesive. The call-out of, you know, you may not like what you get. Well, if you look at all of the different parts of the code independently, then putting it together may not look very pretty in the end. So, you know, staff has done a wonderful job in the past. I, I just wonder if we're fighting against each other as we're, you know, specifically calling out individual items, and if we could go through it, not with a fine-tooth comb, because hopefully we've done our homework, but making sure that all of the feedback we're hearing tonight, both from the residents, the, the property owner, and the commission are taken into consideration, so that what we come out with in draft language is really what we're looking for.
I would appreciate that. I mean, to me, that was our large purpose tonight, was right, to hear, hear where we've landed on some of these really significant things. But again, I don't want to be painstaking about it either, but I appreciate the idea of going through that, again, even if it's quickly, just to make sure we're hitting all those pieces and looking at everything, because we've been very honed in on some specific topics. And I want to make sure that we're meeting everyone's expectations with the, with the whole part.
Real, real quick question. At some point, there was, you, you've shown a chart, it's in our documents. There was alignment on, right, that it was the previous stuff, previous versions and the new version. Can you clarify who participated in that conversation? That alignment was between whom?
Yes. So that was between, on the staff side, myself and the deputy city manager, facilitating a discussion with nationwide realty owners and representatives, as well as then members of the board of the Lowell &amp; Farms Civic Association, as well as other residents. So, and the Lowell &amp; Farms Civic Association reviewed that as a board, and then as a board brought forward their approval of what was proposed. So, as well as then NRI as well. And the staff perspective, we're in, we're in align, all in alignment on that and how this is being proposed to you tonight.
Got it. Thank you.
Jenny, you probably know the code the best. So if, if you wouldn't mind being our guide this evening, and then commission looking to you as you have questions, comments, concerns, are wholly supportive. If you wanted to lead something, please.
Sure. So I, I mean, if you want to start with the code, so that really starts then with section 153045. So that's the purpose and intent, which I noted some additional language maybe that Ms. Fox highlighted about describing sensitivity to residential and proximity and what that looks like. So this really outlines right purpose, applicability, conflicts. And then, as I mentioned during my presentation, relationship to the design guidelines. So really making sure that those are seen as something that's working together in collaboration. And we worked really hard on that language as part of the Historic District to make sure that that's clear. So this is mimicking a lot of the language that we've included as part of that, because we really want that to be meaningful, not ju, not just the guidelines. So.
The only, the only, what, I think what I'm hoping to see in the purpose and intent piece is that if you read about this, especially in the guidelines, you can actually visualize what it is you're trying to develop here in the way of infill development. As, as descriptive, as aspirational as you can give developers or builders or anyone coming in to invest in the area, a visual picture of what it, your purpose and intent of infilling this is. I guess I just want to beef the description of this up, as I've seen in other, other codes and, and guidelines do, so that you can almost imagine, you know, what the end product is going to be. And sometimes I think we tend to use the same words, which are somewhat generic in general, without giving us the ability to take it to the next level. That's what I'm looking for.
So looking at the purpose there, I think that staff has done a great job in drafting the mixed-use regional code development, that, that language. But seeing as not just this neighborhood, but other neighborhoods have come out and said, hey, you know, what about us? Perhaps some language on that last line where it says, as well as supporting residential and recreational uses, supporting appropriately screened, appropriately buffered, something that calls out, we're not just going to throw a commercial use right next to a residential without any consideration for the residential component.
Yeah, we can look into that. And within, and I think maybe, Ms. Fox, what you're alluding to, within the Historic District, we had for each of the various zoning districts, we had then some character and discussion about, I think those, that was in the guidelines though, wasn't it? So that was more guideline-oriented, so we can look at how to put those pieces together. But that really did kind of paint the picture of what, what the characteristics of those various districts were. And I think that would be helpful to include here.
Any other call-outs on purpose, relationship to the design guidelines, or intent? It is entirely possible. Jenny is a miracle worker.
I apologize. So then the next section, then, if there's nothing else, is then discussing uses. So outlining, so the beginning parts of this are sort of the administrative pieces of this, the intent, then the general provisions of that, which explains the different types of uses and how those are represented in the chart.
Ms. Gosh.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. I'm looking at it. You're not looking at it. There we go. Sorry. Okay.
See? Miracle.
Thank you.
Just, just hold on. If you're here, when the screen goes up, every time we're here, it's crash and we all, yes.
Yeah, make, make sure you're awake, right? Okay. So uses, intent, and then, as I mentioned, general provisions, which talks about how the uses are explained and then included in the chart. So what do all the little letters mean when you look at the, the use chart? And then we have use-specific standards and an understanding of what that, what that is and where you find those in the code. And then we talk about existing uses in buildings. So we had talked a little bit about this already tonight, what, how this is currently written and the language related to that. Then it talks about the parameters in which the existing uses... Then it talks about the parameters in which the existing uses would be considered abandoned. So that helps us determine what that, you know, when something is no longer in existence.
Ms. Fox.
Are we at, I want to say, an expansion of existing buildings? I noticed, I, I understand that this is for all of the MUR areas. But it says, should you, I asked if you should, the expansion of parking lots kind of goes to that question that Mr. Way brought up. I know that we're taking this, you know, from Bridge Street Code 2, but if we have an expansion of existing uses, and we say that we will allow for an expansion of parking lot, how does that comply with intent and purpose of pedestrian walkable neighborhood when we're planning for more automobile parking? So I'm, I'm just wondering why we would, I could see expansion of, you know, building area and that sort of thing, but I'm just wondering, the thought about the expansion of parking lots. Is that something we want to just put in here, or is that a waiver, or how's that work?
If I could piggyback on a more general question when it comes to parking, as we've seen many applications to Mr. Way's point, where less than what is required by the use is requested due to whatever factors. Do we have provision in the code that not greater than X number in excess of what the use requires? Do we have a, you can't put more parking than, or has it purely been economic, you know, the, up to the purview of the applicant in the past? I don't recall seeing that in the code, but I haven't memorized it either.
So under the parking plan, which comes later in the code, there are instances where you would be able to modify your required parking. So there is the minimum that's required, but as we have done in other instances, if you, if a user could demonstrate or wanted to demonstrate, I don't need an office parking ratio of four to, four to 1,000 or five to 1,000, and here's, here's my data to support that, we have accommodated that. Also, in Bridge Street, it's a little different, because I, do we still have a maximum in there? Yeah, we do. So if you want to exceed the maximum, there's provisions for that. We don't have that as part of this. We would have only the minimum required. So Jane, I'm, make sure I'm answering your question, sorry.
It says that you can ask for an expansion of parking if you go to 153.048. And I was looking to see what that, kind of speaking to Rebecca's thought about, what is that criteria that allows you to expand it, and what is the maximum you could expand it to? Or is there a maximum? Like, is there, you could expand it a percentage or you can't? And I, I see 1048 as mainly the development plan. I'm not sure where that's at, but that's just a question I have. I mean, I don't want to hold us up, but, but I'm, I guess I'm concerned about how big can you expand these parking areas when the intent here is to create this walkable urban thing and we're trying to get away from expansion of parking areas?
I mean, from a practical standpoint, if you're a developer, you're not going to build more parking, you're not going to pay for more parking and pavement than you need. So again, I think that sort of regulates itself in that people are mindful with their money, and they're not going to try to overbuild something. And we have also done in instances for parking plans that you could have phased parking. So here's what we think we need, and if we need more, we have the opportunity to add more later as part of a phased approval. That way we could get to that, and it's something the commission could require as part of that too.
I, I just wonder if we want to, if we ought to visit that code, not just specifically for the MUR 4 area, not specifically for this code, but we say, you know, people economically, it kind of throttles itself. But we've all seen spite strips, we've all seen buildings built that are the narrow buildings, there was the one in the news recently that sold for $1.3 million, and it's one room wide, it's the narrowest building in the city. We've seen these things, and so, you know, we would hate for Dublin to end up on the news, because look at what someone in some part of the city did. So it might, especially, as Mr. Way points out, we're shifting. It might behoove us to add in that language, especially since the population is sensitive to the paved paradise, put up a parking lot.
I would also add, there's also, could be a discussion about shared parking, where one use doesn't, because of what they are, they don't require the, the parking that they have to build, so that perhaps they could share that with another use. And again, that's a standard practice, as you know, in lots of places and.
We do have provisions for shared parking agreements pretty wholly across the city. Is that correct?
There's no language in here that talks about that, and I don't know, or maybe the other documents, you know, support that, and you don't need it in here.
I mean, as part of a parking plan, you could consider shared parking, we could look at that and see if there needs to be some clarity that could be added to make sure that that would be an opportunity, because we would definitely encourage that as well. I don't think that the intent was to exclude that, so.
Okay, then if, if, as we will come to parking again, if we could go back up to uses, and Jenny, have you be our tour guide again?
Okay, so, yeah, so then we sort of touched on this, expansion of existing uses and then expansion of existing buildings. So there's parameters within the code, again, very similar to what's within Bridge Street, as well as within the historic district. So allowances for people to make modifications and minor alterations to their buildings and sites that don't require complete compliance with. And that's a little less complicated here, because it is more of a suburban model as opposed to Bridge Street, where the, the design character is dramatically different, but wanting to make sure there's allowances for both of those instances within the code. And then we have similar use determination standards. So if there's not a use that's specified, if something is similar, and there needs to be a determination made, there's, there's a process for that as well, which is pretty standard within the zoning code. So process outlined for that. And then we talk about accessory uses and principal uses, and how those are outlined. And then we jump right into then what the, what the permitted use table is here. So as I mentioned, it accounts for, the table accounts for the other three districts, but right now we're only talking about MUR 4. So there's pretty limited uses listed here. This table could be expanded when these other districts get added. But then you'll see in the particular column that aligns for MUR 4, talks about, so the P obviously means permitted, and then on the far right-hand side, if there's use-specific standards associated with that particular use, it would say that there is. So then you would refer then to the subsequent section, as I scroll down here, to what those might be. So, and we'll talk about those, but for example, like the daycare, that's where that opacity question was coming into play, that's a use-specific standard. So as you'll see, it's a pretty limited use, list of uses within MUR 4 in terms of permitted uses, and then there is some accessory and temporary uses. So those would be, the items under the accessory and temporary would be only permitted in conjunction with a primary permitted use. So if you didn't, you couldn't just have an ATM by itself, it has to be associated with something else that is permitted. So then in terms of the use-specific standard, go ahead, you got any questions?
Just to note, the construction trailer in office, I know we had a discussion maybe a year, year and a half ago about duration. And so I, I think we may want to bring that back, not just with MUR 4. I, I don't think we've seen that since we had the discussion, and there was a discussion about so long as building is continuing, construction is continuing, but we had the discussion of, well, if the neighborhood has one remaining lot, or if there is trimwork going on, you know, the definition, we didn't think was tight enough to protect our residents from having the perpetual construction trailer in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and we can definitely add something here to clarify that a little further.
And as it references 153.097, I think just bringing that back at a later meeting, at a future meeting would be warranted. Mr. Way, did you have a comment?
Okay, so I guess before I sort of go through any of the questions about the use-specific standards, were there any use, use-related questions?
Ms. Fox.
I had, I had one, it was concerning, hold on, just let me get to it, ground-mounted, oh no, rooftop equipment for the collection of solar energy is permitted, it's number Once again, concern about abutting residential. I just would like discussion from the commission and comment maybe from the residents. To me, a solar equipment, we want sustainability, I'm just talking about abutting residential, that if we're talking about how roof hip lines create transitional, solar energy panels on a large commercial building certainly doesn't make it look like a transitional residential neighborhood. So, so that, to me, they are a little contradictory, and I'd like to hear what commission thinks about allowing solar panels abutting residential.
So just to seek clarification, before we turn it over to the commission, we have two sec, two different sections in this portion of code about solar panels specifically, or geothermal ground-mounted. We have the ground-mounted that has the following, equipment shall be cited to minimize view from public right-of-way and adjacent properties, and shall be camouflaged to the extent that it can normally function. And on rooftop, that it shall be integrated into the architectural character of the principal structure. So first, seeking clarification, is there concern with both, or would you seek clarity on both the ground-mounted and roof-mounted?
You know, I, it's just up for discussion. I just want to be sure that we're really clear, that we don't have a detrimental view to abutting residential. And if we can make sure that the language here assures that, then I'm happy with allowing. I would prefer solar, obviously, we're hoping we'll move into that, but we definitely have to think about this as abutting residential, so.
So then looking.
I just want to have discussion. Happy to hear the comments.
So looking to the rest of the commission, let's start with ground-mounted, so.
You're going to take me off my train of thought if you ask me that. I just want to make the point that people are putting solar panels on their residential properties now, all through our neighborhoods. So I'm, there's no screening of those. So if you have a hip roof on a commercial building, you could just add solar panels on the roof, because we allow that on residential properties. So I guess is the question, you can't have a flat roof, so you couldn't have, you know, solar panels that are, you know, tilted up, and, because they wouldn't work. So I've just questioned, what is the, what is the question we're trying, or the thing to answer?
On a flat roof, you can have solar panels?
But we're not allowing flat roofs here.
Correct. All right. They can, because this allows for 18 inches, so they can, they can be angled on a flat roof, because they have to be within 18 inches of the roof. So one side could be within two inches, and the other side could be 16 inches, and that would be permitted according to the current code as it's presented. So if we want to go to the commission, let's do ground first, and then we'll do roof?
Would they be larger, from what I understand?
Can you mic?
Flat roof building, and we want to put solar panels on it, okay?
As Mr. Way called out, I believe we're talking no flat roofs.
We are talking no flat roofs.
Seeking clarification, that was earlier in the meeting, so where we landed on flat roofs in MUR 4, permitted, non-permitted?
Flat roofs are not permitted, so. They're not permitted, flat roofs.
Okay.
Right.
If, I, I don't know that we've landed.
They are permitted as it's currently written.
Yes, they would be permitted.
That, that or a gable, yes, or.
Sorry, I misinterpreted that.
We had some, we had some banter about what would you prefer.
Right, right. I just went to the preferred.
And I guess to clarify, the standards that are proposed in here for the renewable energy are similar to what's within the historic district. So what you're discussing is something, again, there's been some minor tweaks, I think, to, to the rooftop ones, but it's applicable in the historic district, just for your reference, I guess.
So just for, for benefit of this conversation, are there areas where these similar or within the same tolerances standards do not apply within the city? Perhaps it's, it's easier to call out what areas do not than what areas.
Again, these are pretty consistent. I think it goes, the question I have on the roof-mounted ones are if the concern raised by the residents was they do not want a rooftop equipment to extend the height of a building, then we would need to clarify that. So I guess depending on the commission's thoughts about the roof-mounted ones, because as it's currently saying, it can be extended no more than 18 inches beyond the permitted height of the principal structure. So if we want that to not exceed that, then we would need to make some modifications to that.
So then looking back to the commission for discussion, so Ms. Fox, as you brought this up, do you want to start us off?
Simply that I know that that was a, a strong point that was brought up. This roof height is really important, and what they didn't want to see is the impact of additional mechanical equipment, whether it be, I'm assuming, solar panels, HVAC, air conditioning, or anything. So I, I think whatever, whatever is decided here with the HVAC and, and air conditioning has to be the same for solar. I mean, the intent is not to have it over a certain height. So let's, to me, that's what we need to do.
Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I, I agree, okay? I, I think we're, I think the resident, the spirit of what the residents have said is they want a residential look on the office buildings, that's why. Our resident did say they would be interested in flat roofs, because they were really obsessed with the 32-foot height, and I understand that, but I think maybe they could be convinced that, that slope roof would be good. The other thing is that solar panels, the technology is flying, and, and, and I recently got an ad from Tesla that they have solar panels now that look just like shingles, that you shingle the whole roof with solar panels, and so therefore not to dwell on it. But, but so, I, I, I think that if we put that they have to look, that it can't be, look like a mechanical thing on the roof, then that would probably be okay. So we want to be sure we're green, if we can be, but, yeah.
And just again, to restate some of the language in the proposed code, building-mounted renewable energy equipment, solar panels, et cetera, et cetera, shall be integrated into the architectural character of the principal structure.
That's becoming possible.
Yes.
With.
Yeah, Tesla's had those shingles for probably five years, it's been a while, but they had them available.
There are.
Yep. Mr. Schneur.
Well, we could talk about the solar panel, the Tesla solar panel, because they're having problems with them, but the sidebar conversation. But I, I agree with Ms. Fox, I think the, the language should comport to the understanding, and wherever there is language that could be construed to permit anything that is above the agreed-upon height, measured from the ground, or, you know, measured from the place we all think it should be measured from, that the, the code should be modified. We don't have to go through it, but HVAC, whatever. And I don't know, you know, without picking this apart, where that, where all those instances might occur.
Now, I do want to call out that the way that building height is, is measured is pretty standard across all sections of code. The language for permitting renewable energy equipment is also pretty standard, there may be a little bit here and there. So if we are saying in MUR 4, the height of the building, including any mechanicals, cannot exceed 32 feet, that is a deviation from all of our other sections of code, and looking for confirmation or clarification or correction on that.
So, again, the solar energy or just general sustainable principles are only really called out specifically in historic district, Bridge Street District WID, and then as proposed here. We are actually working internally on bringing forward this larger solar panel discussion here before the end of the year for you all to have, related to residential and other commercial structures, because our code does not address this in any other way. So we are looking at this in a comprehensive way, and we'll be bringing that forward. So at this point, we're dealing with minimal areas of the city that have allowances for this, so.
Agreed, but the callout was also for mechanical equipment, HVACs.
Right.
Anything that's roof-mounted, and currently across the code, can you, can you specify how that is measured, if that is measured, or taken into account when we're talking building heights?
So it would, in, in the other instances, whether it's mechanicals or otherwise, unless, like Bridge Street would say, you cannot exceed, and again, I'd have to look at those requirements, for mechanicals, there's some allowances for parapet heights and those to extend beyond what the building height would permit. So it, other where, elsewhere in the city, you would be allowed to exceed potentially your building height for mechanicals. So that, I mean, that is something to think through, because. So, that, I mean, that is something to think through, because if you build your building with a roof that meets the roof height, and then 10 years later, you want to put some type of solar panels or something on the roof, because that's, I don't know, something you want to pursue, and you don't meet the building height, then you're, then you're, you wouldn't be allowed to do that ultimately. And if we're saying building height needs to be held fast, then you have no mechanism with which to potentially ask for relief to put solar panels on your roof. So, again, the technology's changing, as you stated, so this may not be an issue as things get more and more efficient and smaller in size, but there are some unintended consequences potentially by limiting this, so.
Forgive me, one last clarification, because I guess I'm going, I'm going back in time, Jenny, and I, if I remembered, I thought it was the top of the parapet, and my parapet will block my, block my mechanicals, but the top of the parapet set my building height, not, not my roof line.
In Bridge Street, is that what you're speaking of?
Yeah, I thought there was an extension.
A general, a general, the parapet, I don't think, got me, got me more height. I, even in this case, at 30, at the 32 feet, that's the top of the parapet.
Yeah, so, in the majority of the code, as it's outlined, you could have a greater height to screen your mechanicals than what the code would permit for your building height. Yeah, in Bridge Street is the maximum parapet height, though, as I stated. So, you can have your building height, but then your parapet can be extend, I think, is it 6 feet? Yeah, 6 feet.
Yeah, so, I want to make sure that we're all speaking the same language, because I heard some discussion, 32 feet, and that includes mechanicals, that includes, you know, so long as the solar equipment does not exceed, and that would be a deviation from how we measure most, I won't say all, most other areas of the city.
And the question is, would this, how do we limit it, or could we limit that so it only applies to this?
Sure, we can do that.
No, we do, we do have provision in other sections of the code that say the roof line is, and mechanicals can be within, so there's a tolerance, and that is, again, Jenny, looking for correction, clarification.
Specifically...
That is, that is called out in other sections of the code, in other uses, in other zones.
And I think the intent is just to limit it to this Llewellyn Farm situation. Is that...
That is one way that this could be handled. So, if you want to say, yes, we do this elsewhere, and that's fine, but here, it's more appropriate for it to be limited. I mean, again, as it's currently written, it's, it does give the tolerance to which we would allow you to have solar energy on the roof of not more than 18 inches. So, I mean, we're talking a foot taller, so, than what the permitted height is. So, it's not saying it's endless, it's giving you some potential options to allow that.
Do we call out any other mechanicals other than the 18 inches for solar? I don't remember seeing that anywhere, but I have seen that in other sections of the code.
We call out screening.
Right, I was going to look at...
On page 13, we do call out the height of the roof-mounted screening shall be included, you're short a word, shall be included in the total maximum building, building height.
Yep, and...
And I added that, so that wasn't there before. So, typically, it would not say that. That blue language is what I added, based on conversations from the previous Commission meeting.
And I believe that that section 3A meets what we're looking for, because the language says all roof-mounted equipment shall be screened, and the screening shall be included in the building height.
Except that there's an exception of 18 inches allowed for solar panels, so...
Omit the 18 inches. I think we're all in alignment there.
Well, but I think Jenny has a point. We're, I'm thinking of sensitivity in a budding residential, and that's, and that is, and, but this, maybe I'm incorrect, what we're reading applies all over MUR, all over MUR, right? So, this code applies everywhere, what we're reading right here. I'm just saying that MUR 4 is a sensitive area, and if it's a budding, and you even bring it down farther to a budding residential, that you don't allow that 18 inches above the height, where you would allow it everywhere else, but because it's a budding residential, and the intent is to screen all mechanicals, that should be included in the screening. In other words, whatever we can do to make it transitional from residential to commercial in every aspect, screening all mechanicals, even solar, which in the end, we probably won't need to worry about this, because it'll be shingles, but the intent is to screen everything.
So, what if, because we call out the screening of mechanicals where solar panels are not defined, they're in the comment-alimited list. What if in section 3, where we say rooftop and building-mounted equipment shall adhere to blah, 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 and it's specifically for solar panels, what if we add the word completely, building-mounted renewable energy equipment shall be completely integrated into the architectural character of the building, of the principal structure? And then allow for, in this mechanical screening, all roof-mounted mechanical equipment, including but not limited to non-integrated solar panels, non-completely-integrated solar panels, HVAC equipment, exhaust fans, bins, so there's an or condition. You still can't get higher than 32 feet, oh, sorry, 18 inches, 32 feet in building height. If the solar panels don't look like mechanical equipment, they are completely integrated into the architectural character, i.e. shingles, then they're mounted, you're still not over 32 feet. But where they don't look like shingles, they are treated like HVAC equipment, exhaust fans, everything else, and have to be completely screened. Would that meet what the Commission is looking for? So, if they look like solar panels, they have to be screened. If they look like shingles, they're integrated in, still can't be over 32 feet.
Wordsmithing aside, could we just limit that language to where it's abutting residential area?
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay, I think I have enough to be dangerous and come up with something...
Okay.
...that addresses what you're talking about. Because you, because I guess to Mrs. Fox's point, the, this would apply, these other districts don't exist yet, so we would just have to be mindful of that as we move forward in developing the code for the other districts, that we're not hindering other development, but, yes, this would apply to everyone in the future.
Which I think is appropriate, to call out the abutting residential. All right.
Okay.
We skipped over outside storage as we moved from the renewable energy down to the HVAC. So, do you want to touch on outdoor storage, service areas and structures mechanic, and then we already exhausted, no pun intended, mechanical screening?
We actually skipped a whole section about the site development standards, so, so, but no other, no other use-related things that anybody has? Okay. Okay, so then the next section, 153047, is the site, are the site development standards, which then get into all the lot size with coverage, building height, as we've outlined, and had some discussion about, related to maximum building height versus setback, and the ratio in which you could increase your building height, but required to increase the setbacks.
I apologize, I had one. As we have had, it seems, infinite discussions on sign and content and that sort of thing. On the vehicle charging station, we allow the one square foot sign, but it doesn't call out where it could be located specifically. So, it does say that it's going to be counted toward the sign allowance for that type, but we know what we're getting at, that the sign is to call out that this is a charging vehicle, you know, station, but calling out where that sign is to be located, we can't talk about what's on the sign, but we can talk about where the sign is.
Okay, can do that.
Is that already identified somewhere else in city regulations? Because there's guidelines for charging stations, and like a handicap spot with a sign, it's to be right in front of the parking space, identifying that as a...
Our large, we can't, we can't call out identification, so...
But that's the location.
Content of the sign, content of a sign can't be...
No, no, just the location you were saying.
Well, perhaps, perhaps I'm misunderstanding what we're referring to in a vehicle-charging station. I'm feeling, I thought that the vehicle-charging station is a unit, and that it refers to any sign or advertising located on the charging station or related structure. So, it would be either physically on the unit, or some appurtenance to that unit, was, is my understanding. And it's just that one square foot.
Yeah, the way that I read that, and perhaps it references something else, but it says any sign or advertising located on the vehicle-charging station, but is that on, how are you defining vehicle-charging station? Is it the spot in which the vehicle sits? Is it the actual structure that comes out of the ground that provides the plug? Is it adjacent to the plug? How are you defining it? Because could I put, you know, 10 feet in front of that, an advertisement that says, hey, get your free sandwich, and I'm saying, hey, that's my one-square-foot sign? Because we are very, very restricted in calling out, they're permitted the one-square-foot according to code. But how am I defining the charging station when I say on the vehicle-charging station?
I think we can look at, look at that as we bring this forward, how to address that.
Right. I'm not sure that our code has a defined term for vehicle-charging station, so that could address your concern, perhaps?
Certainly.
Okay.
Sorry, Jenny.
That's okay, no worries. Yeah, so we're at the site development standards. Yes, Kim.
So, I have to go back to my earlier statement about the roof pitch. So, I got caught up in the language that, the way that we were talking about it before, and you were presenting it. So, Subarea D requires a pitched roof, which it says, pitched roof required, but why does not Subarea C, which is the same situation, up against the residential? Was that something...
That was discussed to allow some flexibility for what happens in C, but given that the scale of the buildings in Subarea D, which are those smaller-scale buildings adjacent to residential, there was a request by the residents that those be a pitched roof only.
So, that wasn't part of Subarea C discussion at all?
No, I mean, we talked about roofs, but not, not limiting that to a pitched roof only, or a flat roof only in C.
So, when, so when you go to roofs, which is a couple pages, it says pitched roof shall not be sloped less than, and it doesn't reference anything about flat roofs. I guess you don't have to give any, it just, it's, it's just a little bit, I kind of immediately assumed that it was all pitched roofs.
Okay, we can clarify what...
I think there needs to be some, like, because I was confused about it, right? That we were actually allowing flat roofs, I guess everywhere, I don't know.
Okay, that's an easy clarification.
Mr. Supalak.
Jenny, I might offer to, I think, I think it was Clay, might have been Clay, might have been Sven, who was concerned about, actually, it might have been in the comments, Subarea A and B on the roof height, about the whichever is less. I think you're really saying it's max two stories, it's max 32 feet. I don't, I don't think you need to mince your words with the whichever is less in either of those cases.
Okay. I was trying to help, but I think it has made it worse.
That one, I like Mr. Boggs' comment. It's very common to say the or whichever is less, so that the interpretation is not, well, it can be the or, I'm only two stories. So, Mr. Boggs? Mr. Supalak, could you restate the comment?
I was trying to eliminate the or as well, by just making it max two stories, max 32 feet.
But doesn't it give you the flexibility that if it's two stories, it could be less than? You wouldn't want someone to think that you had to build a building that's 32 feet.
I wouldn't want the ambiguity there.
Well, if you say max, I guess.
Max, max and max.
I don't know, what's, what's the better...
I'm just picking the two stories, and it happens to be 36 feet.
Max 32.
But I max the two stories, so I think that's why there has been the tradition of whichever is less.
Got it.
I hear what you're saying, Mark. I don't know if that's, if legal likes it one way or the other.
Or max two stories, not to exceed 32 feet.
I mean, that, well, that is a different way of saying the same thing, but, yeah. If, if, if there's a feeling that that's clearer, then we could do that, certainly.
Yeah, that's fine. I was trying to make it as narrow as possible, because I didn't want, and we had had some previous discussions with the residents about, yeah, right, if you get a 32-foot-tall building, if for some, what, you could make that work into a three-story, then you're really circumventing the purpose of this discussion, so. Okay, I like that not to exceed, then. I think that makes it maybe clearer, so.
Okay, any other call-outs on roofs before we go development standards? Okay, Ms. Rausch.
So, I guess, any questions related to, and again, we can make this clarification in all these instances where it says whichever less, we can fix that to be not to exceed, to make that clear. And any other things, as you all, again, the whole point is to poke holes in this and figure out, like, am I, are we creating any loopholes with the language? So, again, our intent was a one-story building at a, not to exceed 22 feet, a two-story building is the maximum, not to exceed 32 feet, and in between one story and two-story, however your building is increasing in height, you're increasing your setback. So, obviously, the taller the building, the more setback you're required. Mm-hmm.
I'm struggling a little bit with the language, and this could just be me hanging up. So, parking lots are recommended to be located strategically on a lot, completely aligned, where they can serve as a buffer between residential. So, I don't particularly care for where they can, but also, I don't want the developer, whichever developer this is, to consider that, the buffer, because we also use buffer as screening, greenery, that sort of thing. So, I don't want someone to say, okay, well, you know, this is my buffer, so therefore I'm going to do the minimum minimum, because it says adequately screened, but I'm meeting my tree count.
Right, so the intent of this was really to try to encourage, not require, that parking be located between the building and the property line. But again, allowing some flexibility, because we don't know, and some of these, for the undeveloped site in particular, how that's going to lay out. I mean, in practical, developable sense, you're building a double-loaded parking with a two-way drive aisle between your building and the rear property line, so for all intents and purposes, you're going to have the parking loaded, located there, and it's going to already be 95 feet. So, I mean, the math, when you're looking at this from a practical standpoint, really lays out, and the purpose of this was to make sure that there is the buffer there. I mean, we can tighten that language up if you don't like the, the exact verbiage there, but it really was to provide that, and maybe buffer is the wrong word, maybe it's something else, maybe that helps. So, it's not to be misconstrued with the landscape buffer.
I think that's really where I'm heading.
Is the intent, well, strategically, I think, is sort of vague, or not sort of, it is vague. Is it parking lots are recommended to be located so that they...
Provide a...
Will serve? Is that was, is that the intent?
Yeah, again, I think we can tighten that up to be more clear about...
And you're going to come back with all this anyhow, so...
Right, exactly. So, you'll get another stab at seeing if I hit the mark or not, so. Any other comments about the development standards? Okay. So, then the map, which we've talked through and applies to the standards, then we have our additional development standards, so we've talked through some of these already. Outdoor storage, did you, did you have a question about that? Or no? Okay. And then service area, structures, and mechanical screening, so we've had some discussion about that. I don't know if there's any further comments related to those sort of outdoor service area or screening requirements. Then, after that, we talk about architectural requirements in terms of what's permitted for windows, the roofs, we can add some additional language about what permitted roof types are, and we can, I guess, just for my clarity, are we striking the 1212, or we want people to have the opportunity... to have different roof pitches? I guess I was hearing conflicting comments about that. I mean, and we can bring back some more information about what that translates to in terms of additional height, as it really is as egregious as it maybe feels. I don't think that it is, but we could look at what that feels like.
I'm inclined personally to leave it to the point of every bit that rises above it, they also push down the Eave line, right, is what results from that.
Additionally, you narrow, and so there was a comment about the shadowing and that sort of thing. But if the roof continues up, it's not a flat roof, it's a pitched roof, then the overall shadow is decreased by the angle.
For me, as we go forward, and I think for help with the neighborhood, too, to understand what the impact of the different roof lines would be, it would just be helpful to understand what that height could be. I mean, because, you know, I'm not an architect, I can't see what that is, but it just, I look at Mezzo, and I see how it soars up with a very steep roof, and I just know what the intention here is, to try to keep the profile as low as we can with a transitional look. So I think that needs a little bit more study.
Okay. Then we get into exterior materials in terms of what primary materials are permitted. Again, trying to provide some flexibility for the buildings within this area. Then we obviously allow for, if there's other materials that should be considered, that they would have the opportunity to bring that forward.
Can we, on six, on permitted materials? Can we do "may be acceptable" instead of "are acceptable," if carefully? Because carefully is, again, one of those subjective words. So "may be acceptable if carefully integrated," or if we tighten up that language, I think I'd feel more comfortable.
Okay.
Can we also specify that they could only happen on a second story? That they don't happen at the ground level?
On which?
On the Evis. So it's not, you know, Evis is something that you can go up and technically punch through. So if you can't touch it, that would be ideal. So in essence, you wouldn't be able to do it on a one-story building, but you could do it on a second story of a two-story building.
Also, I noticed on the glass, there's tinted, reflective, opaque, translucent. You know, I think if we're talking walkable neighborhood, it's sort of a golden rule that transparent glass on ground-story floors are the rule. So I think that we have to kind of get a little bit more specific about what we expect. Maybe it's called out later on in ground-story work. You know, I didn't see it in here, but I think we have to be kind of careful about glass and ground story.
I would just call out, since we have different uses where they are commercial buildings, they are commercial uses, but they could still have bathrooms with showers. I would much rather those not be transparent.
You know, I think we just need to think about intent here, don't we? I suppose it all depends. This is mere four, but this goes everywhere. So one of the things that I think was brought up when we had this, the gentleman who came and discussed ground floor, he said he walked by Bridge Park, and he noticed that many of the windows were tinted, which he found surprising, because you can't see in, and that changes the dynamics. So it may be that it has to be really looked at as how we're going to do this.
One last call-out. I used to own a store where our windows faced west, and they were clear windows, and I would have paid every last penny, because the girls working the cash register would bake. So I couldn't put a tint on them, because it was required to be clear glass. But I couldn't put blinds on them, they had to be clear glass. It was incredibly uncomfortable. We ended up moving the cash register and having a dead spot in the building, which is front windows, which really makes for lousy, you know, visibility lousy. We want that engagement, we want that movement. Well, in my store, you wouldn't have had engagement and movement, because I shifted everything back 12 feet.
I think you're making a point of why there are so many choices.
Right. You know, leave it be. I think the only thing I bring up is that when we're, if we're looking at that, at the bulk of this, and some uses, maybe we call it out in retail, or we call it out in where you actually want that view, and so, good point, Rebecca, I appreciate that.
And maybe that's more applicable in the guidelines, actually.
That's where I was going. I was going to say, that's where it couples with design guidelines. Secondary materials. Any objections? Again, I hang up on the "maybe." We say "Evis maybe," but we don't call out the "when." It is acceptable, how much, it is acceptable. Obviously, secondary materials have their own limitation, but we've had that discussion with other buildings, and where it's an appropriate use and where it's not.
Landscaping and tree preservation. We've talked about the general provisions, and then started talking through the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. So I guess, any comments or questions about that?
I just want to, the way I read this is that the buffer has to be 25 feet wide and planted with one tree per 20 linear feet. And then in addition to that, there's the six-foot-high opaque screen. So in essence, you are getting a double layer of buffering that we talked about before. So it's really almost two elements. So the general one is left, so I was trying to make that point.
But again, that's, you make a great point, and lots of discussion that we've had about that was, so there is that six-foot-tall opaque screen at the ground level, and we also did add between various drafts that you have evergreen and deciduous, so you can sort of provide that multi-level screening, basically, that you're not just, because originally it was evergreen, and then we had some discussions about, well, maybe we want some variety, so that you're getting all those, it's not just a visual buffer, it's like truly a buffer, so.
Just one call-out on the landscaping. Staff has done a remarkable job over the last few years at refining what the, again, we have this vision in our heads, and we're not always very articulate about expressing that. Reading through this, it's, "Yep, that means, yep, that, okay, these are the words that express the picture in my head." So just a compliment there.
Great. Okay, and then I have, I made a note of talking about the significant trees and preserving their drip line, or looking at how to incorporate that language as well. So any other comments about landscape buffer? Okay. Then we get into parking lot and circulation area landscaping. So what's within your parking area and what's permitted there?
I have a question about that one. On interior landscaping on parking lot, in parking lots, is there, and I look to Mr. Way, because I know he does this for a living. Is there a trend or a new way of looking about landscaping parking lots, other than the same-old-island kind of thing with a couple of trees in the center? Is there a, is this, is this still what's happening? And maybe it's fine, I just thought maybe there's something new that we weren't aware of.
Well, I mean, the trend is to use those spaces to do water management. So, and I think there's language in here about that, where you can use that partly to attract water and let it infiltrate. I think, and this is not a trend, this is kind of a design idea that's been around for a long time, is instead of having 10-foot islands, like spaced out, you actually put a bunch of them together, and you create like a 40-by-40-foot square in different places of a parking lot. So you could put four trees there, and you get this bigger kind of canopy, and you don't just have the cookie cutter typical. And I've seen that implemented, I've seen it mature over 20 years, and it's really, really effective. Because you create these little groves of trees in parking lots, and so it's a different feel. And again, it's been around for a long time, and there's no requirement, I don't think, to do that. The requirement is typically the 10-foot, you know, ends of islands, and maybe some in between. And from a design standpoint, that's just really boring.
Bridge Street has allowances for that, and talks about those more consolidated islands as part of that. So again, if that's something you wanted to consider, we could.
I would love to consider that. Oh, I'm just going to.
The one call-out that I would have there is placement, I think, is key, especially where we have, so many of our businesses have curbside pickup and that sort of thing, where they dedicate spaces, and then we have accessible spaces. So for the customers who do not fit in the pickup, nor the accessibility with a placard, pregnant women, ill individuals, that sort of thing, as we cluster those items closer to the entrance, we push the non-accessible, non-pickup places further back. And so just being sensitive to accessibility that is not specifically blue-placard accessibility, but rather making it so that businesses are accessible to all.
I really like the idea of the grove-like thing in the parking lot. I mean, if we don't have it in here, I think we should, because I personally think that it looks like a suburban parking lot, and we're trying to change the image of this whole neighborhood. And if I'm thinking about it abutting residential, it's a lot prettier to look back on a grouping of trees than it is to look at an island of parking lot with a single tree here and there. I think the design idea is an enhancement to what traditional parking lots look like. So I'd like to see that.
I mean, that perhaps should be picked up with the design guidelines, maybe? I don't, picked up in the design guidelines and described as, you know, an alternative?
Some options, yeah.
Some options. The other thing I wanted to say, that, again, the more open area around a tree you have, the more they get water and they get air. And so when you create those big areas, the trees survive much better. You've put them into a 10-foot island, and you might as well kiss them goodbye the last couple of years, then you have to replace them.
You could also use, obviously, that place, if it's grouped more, as your open space, gathering, dual-purpose. You know, I mentioned to Jane, because that's one of her big, you know, placemaking and places for gathering. Put a bench, a couple of benches, maybe water feature, piece of art.
We're good. Hits all the boxes, right? Okay. Okay, any other things related to landscaping? Okay, then parking requirements are next, which, again, are pretty standard. So minimum parking ratios, and then explaining how the chart works in terms of uses. So we've included only the uses that are outlined at this time within the permitted uses table, so.
I would just challenge staff, not just specifically in the MUR districts, but also across the city, the maximums. So we have some parking lots. Again, you know, we're looking at longevity, we're looking at not the same use as going to be in the building all of the time. So if I happen to have an office use, but I don't have any clients visiting the office, and the next person who occupies the place now does, obviously, we have to plan for the future, but at the same time, maybe revisiting those parking requirements and making sure that they're suitable for the area, for the feel, for the design guidelines, for the concept, the city land use plan.
Yeah, we can look at that, and we could even maybe at this, even if it's, again, not necessarily related to this, look at in the guidelines, adding something about maximums or something along those lines, that's encouraging you to not build your whole site with all the parking. So I think we could look at how to incorporate that as well.
Mr. Supalak.
I guess I'm planting, we're obviously all living through it and hearing plenty about it, right? There's lots in there, but I guess I'm planting the seed that, is it possible, relative to hybridized work, that that's the trigger that causes us to revisit a wealth of these things long-term? You know, I don't know what the staying power of that is. Right now, it's holding, but there's anticipation that it will, but what ramifications does that have relative to the entire list of uses? Might be the real big crux of it moving forward.
Just one call-out, that also may be kicking up to city councils, or looking to Ms. Boggs. We don't have a lot of open space, we don't have a lot of available land to build out, but we do have some very large office buildings that have very large parking lots, that perhaps there could be some redevelopment without redevelopment necessarily. So just a plug for city council.
And honestly, that was the original impetus for the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, was looking at the Metro Blazer area. This sort of grew from there, but the beginning discussion of that was older office buildings with large parking lots, and are we using that to the maximum developable potential that we can? So this is, this particular area of DCAP is a little different in terms of what our goals are, but the other future phases of that are really targeting that exact thing. So, and to your point, Mark, we don't know what's going to hold at this point. So, I mean, we've heard, I've heard both, that it's going to return to what it was, but again, we don't know. So how do we be mindful of that as we move forward?
Well, to the point of, I agree with you, there is an economic, it regulates itself. I don't want to, I don't need to overbuild my parking lot, and if I do, there's other provisions that hem me in, which is going to be the coverage and those types of things. But to the point of, if now we're anticipating, anticipating a long, slow reduction over the next decade of parking requirements relative to, you know what I mean, work adjustments, maybe we need to be mindful of a max now, so we don't overbuild and have to undo it.
Okay. Okay, then parking plans, we had some discussion of this already. Any additional items? I will include some discussion in here about shared parking provisions and what that, how we could accommodate that. Again, that was the intent of that. And then part of that, when you're reviewing a parking plan, so the next section is then looking at the demonstration of that. So what's available, what's adjacent, so the criteria in which you would be looking at a parking plan and the need for that?
Just one call-out in C, in the demonstration of need for parking, number nine. Again, we have a "may" without the conditions expressed. So off-street parking requirements may be met in a shared parking lot located within 600 feet, but when would that be acceptable? But do we always want it? I mean, off-street parking, it can be used, so long as there's a shared parking agreement in place, so long as the same property owner owns both. We're looking at the hotel over, I guess it's over that way. The hotel, they have a different hotel property, or the mixed-use, rather, with the hotel property, it's within 600 feet, they own both buildings, are we going to let that qualify? Even though the application's already come forward, and it's not really subject to a shared use, all of those conditions.
Okay. Okay, then we talk about alternative parking dimensions, curb stops. Again, these are pretty standard. Same with bicycle parking, that standard is similar to what is required elsewhere, where we specifically call out bike parking. Vehicle charging stations, I'm on the bottom of page 21, if you're following along. Again, that's standard to what's included within the Bridge Street district. Then we get into loading areas, also very standard for Bridge Street.
I'm sorry. Is there a requirement for the number of charging stations per 1,000 square feet or something? I know newer developments are requiring a certain number, maybe not in Dublin, but...
I mean, this is calling out one vehicle charging station for every 200 parking spaces unless waived by the planning commission, so.
Okay, so it's there.
Of course, the parking spaces are stipulated back to the square footage of the building.
So if you don't have 200 parking spaces, you don't need to have a charging station, I guess that, is that the city, is that the standard? It seems like that's...
Honestly, I'd have to look at what Bridge Street, does Bridge Street require you to have? I don't, I think this might be the first one that actually requires you to provide this. I don't think we have that elsewhere. I'd have to look and verify, but...
Your question really is, is that the right threshold? Because there should be a minimum threshold before you trigger into it.
Well, there's a, I mean, the world is going electric, and if we don't get on board, we're going to be behind.
Yeah.
I think there should be heavily focused, not heavily focused, but there should be a real emphasis on a certain number of charging stations, one per 200. Parking spaces seems pretty minimal.
Yeah, I don't disagree. It's tethered into, I mean, it's tethered into the parking commentary and the mobility commentary and the...
Okay, we can look at what that might be. And again, it does allow for, if they want to do something less, then you can waive the, like, you can allow them to do less as part of a...
And the only call-out I had there is on those types of discussions where we're requiring something that we have not historically required, engaging with our economic development. something that we have not historically required, engaging with our economic development branch of the city, I think would be warranted.
Okay.
And then, on the... What is this? The loading areas. We call out that loading areas should not be, and I don't remember where it is, but it talks about not facing public streets. Where was that? There we go. Design requirements, item three. No loading docks are permitted on front elevations facing the public street. But I don't really see anything in there, you know, part of the scrutiny that this section is undergoing is because of the adjacent residential use, but we don't really address that in this loading section, at least that I saw.
The location?
The location of loading, you know, loading areas, if it's adjacent to the residential area, if that's the only option for the business, then can we mitigate the impact to the adjacent residential area, the beeping backing up, the, you know, early morning, late-night type interaction that that can come with? Can we mitigate the impact to the residential adjacent use?
Yeah, we can look at how to incorporate something.
Thank you.
Also, this just refers to the front elevation, but I wonder if the building is on a corner, then it faces the public street on two sides. I think it should be... They shouldn't face any public street.
Okay.
I think just striking the word "front."
Yeah, that's what I... Okay. Again, that's pretty standard, just talking about connections.
The only thing I might mention about that one, or it's circulation and access is on four paths and connections. You know, I think just, maybe this isn't the guidelines, not necessarily here, but we've run into this where people do not want to give that sort of walkway access between properties or through properties or whatever. And if the intention and the purpose here is to create that environment that we're looking for, we have to be strongly definitive about what our expectations are on that, and that would probably fall in the guidelines. I didn't see it happening here so much in the code, but we haven't gotten the guidelines, and I doubt if we will tonight, but I think that's something we need to look at.
Would that be covered under item B, where it says installation of sidewalks and shared use paths onsite shall be made in compliance with the Dublin Corporate Area Plan and other city plans and policies?
I would expect strong wording, I guess.
Okay. We can see how to beef that up a little bit. Then, signs is the next major section. Which, for the most part, these are very similar to what the standard code would permit, I think, especially in terms of office. So 50 square feet for signs is pretty standard for the ground... For the monument signs, wall signs are a little bit smaller, but I think that's appropriate, given it's not a retail-type building. It's really intended to be office.
Can I ask a question about the... You know how we were talking about the liveliness of signs in the Bridge Street District? You know, the envisioning process of this has sort of been, or the discussion around this has sort of been around the fact that this is going to be a place where we're hoping that the infill is, you know, has a sense of a true neighborhood and a community space that's new and urbanized, but maybe a little different. Are we thinking about what that signage... Signage impacts the mood of a place, and I'm just wondering, we're going back to traditional kind of suburban office, signage, is that what we want? I don't want to go into each one of these. I'm just asking the question of whether or not that needs some thought as to how the signage affects the character of this new development.
That may be something we also want to consider in the design guidelines, you know, making sure that we're establishing that character and keeping to it, holding ourselves to it.
We can look at that as this comes forward and evaluate that a little bit better to see if there's some additional things to be incorporated. Sight lighting, very similar to other sections of the code. That's pretty standard in terms of shielding and trespass and light poles. We do, yeah, talk about light poles and heights and things like that, which are scaled, and I'm seeing your favorite requirement in here, Jane, about the concrete.
Oh, yeah. You knew it, Jenny, didn't you?
We missed that in here. That was my apologies.
I absolutely hate three-foot concrete columns and a light pole on top of them.
I take responsibility for that, Ms.
I'm sorry, but you've got to get rid of that.
Okay.
And I'll turn to Mr. White to ask him what the new trend in light poles is. They remind me of a grocery store parking lot, and I just think they need to go away, way far away. But, you know, I'd like to show hands.
It just protects the light pole. That's why they do it.
That's all it does, is protect the light pole. So it's a walkable neighborhood, and if you run into it, if you've had one or two margaritas, that's your own fault. That's all I can say.
You can put, like, a gabion basket around it with plantings and that sort of thing, something that also protects the light pole, but it's not 36 inches just...
It's the cheapest solution to the problem.
A concrete with the seam from the cylinder that was used to pour the concrete.
Okay. I'll make it go away for you. Then, utilities and screening, which, again, are standard. So, and then the next part really gets into the review procedures, which, as we've discussed, is very similar in terms of the application types, concept plan, final development plan, minor projects allowed, and waivers and administrative departures. We do include, if there's a concept plan with a development agreement, the City Council will be engaged. That's a process we've incorporated within other areas of the city, just because that has larger-scale impacts, so. I don't know if you want me to go through every single process here. Again, it's very similar to what we have elsewhere, and as I mentioned, minor projects is where I made the largest changes, and I can show you that if you want to see that.
Yep. So that's in section G2, and so I would look to the commission just to ensure that we are good with the square footage. So we have G2A that has that 3,500-square-foot call-out, and G2B that has the 2,500 reduction from the 10,000 in each of those two sections. So seeing two, head nods, three, four. Okay, we're good.
Okay. So that rounds out the code portion of this. Are there any other comments about the zoning code?
I can't... Oh, sorry.
You go ahead.
Before you got here, we had this conversation about not allowing waivers. I just wanted... We did finalize that.
I was on waivers.
And I support the waiver process, but it's what we're doing now, and I think it's... Changing it would be not the right thing to do.
So, the one call-out I have is in 3B under waivers. It says the waiver may be submitted with any application. Is that a request for a waiver, or is that the waiver itself? In the section prior, an application for a waiver shall be made in accordance with... And the next one says, the waiver may be submitted with any application for a final development plan.
It probably should say a waiver, because you can have a waiver individually, or you can have a waiver submitted as part of a...
Is it a request for a waiver, or is it the waiver itself submitted with the final development plan?
Those, in my mind, are one and the same thing, I guess. I'm not... You're making an application that is the waiver request.
See?
The waiver itself is granted by Planning and Zoning Commission. The developer or property owner would be applying for the waiver. So I guess in the review procedure, where there is reference to anything prior to the commission acting, it should refer to either a waiver request or waiver application.
Agreed. It almost looked like the waiver had to be granted to be then submitted with the final development plan.
Yeah, that's not being, like, asking to ask for a waiver. That's... Yeah, no, that's not what that is.
Yes, okay.
So... Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Fox.
On... Hold on, I just lost it. On administrative approvals, let's get down to 2D, adjustment to building heights up to 10%, with no more than 10% of the floor plate of... Anyway, allowing to go up to 10%. And I would say this is fine, except in a budding residential property. That should not be an administrative... That should always go to the planning and zoning, because... Simply because that just lays that boundary with every planning and zoning group, and it gives public input, but it's only for a budding residential.
It also provides the Planning and Zoning Commission, whomever that may be, with the planning report, that includes history, which would include the discussions that we've had.
We could even look at whether that needs to be even included here, because we... Honestly, we don't have building height approvals as in any other district that I'm aware of that are administrative approvals. So maybe that... I think we were trying to provide some flexibility, but based on our conversation tonight, I'm not sure this is appropriate at this point, so.
It only matters for me, a budding residential. The rest, I understand, and I think you should have flexibility...
Okay.
...to be able to get development to move forward and add things that they need, and to be able not to have to keep coming back to planning and zoning. But this is sensitive, and this should not... You know, a budding residential is all I care about.
Okay. That sounds good. What else? Anything else?
Any other call-outs in these sections, these final sections? Ms. Roush, did you get all of the direction information clarification from the commission that you sought this evening?
Yes, I think so. I think we've covered and discussed everything raised with some direction. And again, I will verify that the concerns raised by the neighbors have been, if there's additional clarification that I needed to address something, I'll make sure that that's clear. Yeah, I think we've covered all those topics, at least as much as my brain can remember at this point.
Then, looking back to Planning and Zoning Commission pertaining to this particular set of code, and any other inklings or any other light bulbs that were prompted after reviewing this set of code? Has everyone expressed everything that they wanted to through the course of this meeting? Are there any other call-outs or requests for information brought before the commission, again, following this?
I guess my only other item would be about the screening for the outdoor recreation areas for daycare. So as I mentioned, everywhere else in the code, it's a 50% opacity requirement. There was a request for that to be increased to 100. So I guess the commission's feedback on that, use specific standard, if you're okay with remaining with... As it's drafted, or you want that to be increased?
So, a question first for clarification before commission discussion is, we do have different areas now. I'm thinking specifically in Muirfield, there's the one daycare facility that has... So as it's currently covered in the code, where the uses are adjacent to residential, is there any exception to that 50%?
We could look into that and see, because in most instances, they're in a commercial area, so maybe that's not as applicable. So that's a good call-out, and we will investigate that a little further to provide some guidance about how to cover that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Roush. I don't know how you handled the beginning of the meeting, so, public comment, I don't know if you closed it yet or not.
Hold on just a second. I got to catch up to you. We're going to have to swear you in. All right. Raise your right hand. Answer in the affirmative, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jean Philammon.
Thank you, John.
All right, thank you. My name is Jean Philammon, 4731 Balefield Drive. I'm also the current president of the Civic Association. I want to thank Councilmember Jane Fox, along with members of the commission, as well as Director of Planning, Jenny Roush. I wanted to ask a question, and I know that there are some issues that have already been discussed, but I wanted to go back to page 39, when you were discussing the administrative departures, and I think it was over the definition. And I think we had submitted a question to Ms. Roush on the issue of whether a property owner would have the ability to ask for height requests, which would be greater than the 32 max that we have, in principle, agreed with. And also, I also want to thank the members of the representative of NOI as well, because it's been a long process in terms of getting us to where we are today. But yes, the question that I had was... Oh, the issue that I raised this afternoon to Ms. Roush was whether it's okay, moving forward, that such a demand could be made. And I understand, based on the discussion here tonight, that there is, you know, you want flexibility, you want the property owners to be able to maximize as much as they could. But when we discussed the process, you know, we felt that, you know, max 32 was as far high as we could go. And so when we saw, or when one of the residents saw the language and brought it up before the board, so we felt that we had to, you know, raise it. And so... And the answer that we received from Ms. Roush was, yes, you know, they can make that request. Now, turns out, the request can be granted or denied, but it's there. And so, and looking at the section I and number two, and I see here that there's a the AD shall be limited to any modification of no greater than 10% to a numeric zoning standard related to building dimensions. The other language, I don't have an issue with, but I guess I'm not clear what building dimension, what it means, if that's, you know...
Thank you. Ms. Roush, could you offer clarification?
Sure. So building dimensions, from our perspective, would include building height, so it has to do with all aspects of the building.
Okay. And that's where we had, you know, we... That's the reason that we brought, you know, that issue before, because we, again, as I've said, we agreed, you know, in principle, what's the language, most of the language of the draft, but as you members are doing here tonight, there's still some outstanding issues, some clarity that we need. And that's one of them, that we felt, I can understand the open space, the landscaping, parking, fencing, walls, but that building dimensions mean that, you know, you can go higher than the 32. You can get up to 35.2 if you, you know, if somebody asks for exactly 10%. So that's where... That's an issue that we have. And if I may raise a second issue. Now, this one is a bit redundant, because I think you went over it long ago, but I got here a bit late. And it's on... And we got to page three, and it's about the use. I think that we had... We, you know, we raised a question to Ms. Roush, whether existing use allowed, you know, with the proposed new use, that's coming. And I guess we wanted to know if you can grandfathered any use into MUR4, or... Now, we do see there's a timetable in the language of the draft, but the answer that we received... that we receive, we were just not sure how that would be, you know, applicable going forward. So for example, if developer or owner wanted to build a grocery store right now, you know, we wanted to know under SO, now, we wanted to know how would that be, you know, how would that be granted moving forward? Is there a timetable? Is the timetable the 12 months, the timetable that we see in the draft? Is that, is that applicable? You know, where is the starting and the stop, stopping point?
Sorry. So I would look to Mr. Fox, just for clarification, to go over grandfathering rules where it comes to, first of all, the use has to be the permitted use in the first place and then how that would transition into a grandfathered use with some supporting clarification from Ms. Roush on suburban office and what types of uses that that currently permits that therefore could be subject to the grandfathering.
So if somebody is engaging in a use that is permitted by their current zoning, they have a property right to continue engaging in that use. And so if the zoning is changed so that that use is no longer permitted quote unquote in the new zoning, then typically it would become what's called a non-conforming use, meaning it could still legally continue, but it is not viewed as permitted. What the existing uses provisions of both this proposed code as well as some of the other zoning district codes in the city do is it says, as long as these uses are continuous, are not abandoned for a period of 12 months or longer, we are going to deem them to continue to be permitted rather than non-conforming. The consequence of that really being more to help that property owner be able to continue to borrow money, for example, to invest in the continuation of that use. That use can continue indefinitely, but once it stops and stops for a period of 12 months or longer, then it is extinguished as a, as an existing permitted use and they would be obliged moving forward only to engage in a use that is permitted under the current new zoning or a conditional use under the current new zoning.
Now, if there is no current use, let's hypothetically say that it's a vacant property, there's no use that we know currently. So how will that, I guess, apply moving forward into the new zoning? So if they come after the new zoning comes into effect, say, hey, we have this property here, we'd like to build a grocery store on it, would that be, the property was in existence of the lot prior to the rezoning, but now we'd like to apply the lot to such and such? So would that be?
A vacant lot would have to comply with all of the new regulations because there is not an existing use being engaged in actively on the property.
All right. Thank you. And if I may ask one more questions that, that we brought up. And this one is in regard, with regard to parking. And I, and I know that, that the commission have, have discussed parking already, but again, it's about expansion and, and our concern was that if you can request, now in the instance that, you know, you request 25% of more parking than previous use, should that be, should that be discussed or looked at under as a minor project? We see that on page, I believe, give me a second.
19.
Page 19, okay. And we thought, thank you. And we, we thought that that's a big, that's a major expansion. So if it's not part of the FDP, why should such a request come under minor project even though there is a process in place to make sure that there is approval or nonapproval for that? But they, I guess it's, this was over of, I guess, delegation of authority in this particular point.
So Ms. Roush, could you touch on allocation of the land? So if a parking lot were to expand 25% on an existing building, we don't leave parcels partially fallow, you know, non-developed orphaned little areas. Could you talk through how that application would go through, what would likely be converted from something to parking lot and therefore what it would be subject to as far as minor development plan or, or?
So I think as the code is written, if you look at a minor project, it's saying parking plans that are not associated with the final development plan, that those, if it meets the threshold of that, then a minor project is reviewed by the administrative review team, which again, there's notification for that and the opportunity for public comment. If it's associated, if a parking plan is associated with a final development plan, so a larger development project, then that would be subject to the Planning and Zoning Commission review and would come before you as a, as an application with notification and review.
Ms. Fox.
I, I thought we, in the discussions with the neighborhood, I thought that there was some agreement that any modifications that would happen to a property that a budded residential neighborhood would not ever be an administrative review, that it would, or that anything that was significant, like 25% increase in the parking or 10% increase in height, certainly some of these very minor things, but anything that might be impactful, I guess, or would cause, or would maybe stimulate neighborhood opinion would have a place that would have public comment. Is it possible that we can review the code and say that anything that looks like, maybe with cooperation, if going further with the neighborhood, that these items that look like they have some impact that they would have an interest in would always come before for public comment instead of administrative?
I, I would look carefully at that because you can have neighbors who have opinions about the color of the shutters. And so substantial, but, but we have to outline what, what that would be and define the threshold. And I think staff is looking, what do we want that threshold to be? Is the 25% or more parking okay to go to administrative or do we want that to come to us? Where is that threshold of, where is our level?
I think that's what I'm just asking to be examined.
Yeah, and let's clarify between administrative approval, minor project approval and final. So administrative approval means that I have the discretion to do that without any required reviewing body and that, the limitations of that are pretty narrow. So and as particular if we're striking the part about building height. So again, those are really meant to be very, very minor changes that wouldn't require someone to submit a formal application and go through the process. They're meant to be really administrative in their, in their scope. So again, that's adjusting lot lines, moving things around in the parking lot, minimally, some minimal building footprint expansion, substituting material, things like that. That falls under that administrative approval as for the director. The minor project is then meant to be sort of that next level. So, and that is, it's reviewed by the administrative review team. So the terminology is similar, so that's kind of confusing, but that is an application submitted, a fee paid, I mean, staff's reviewing administrative approvals that I approve, but this is another level and brought before ART. There's notification requirements in here, so property owners are notified, can come to ART as a public meeting. You can come and make comment ahead of time during the meeting and then it's reviewed by a number of directors, including myself, as part of that. And again, the threshold for that, as we're drafting it, is pretty minimal in terms of the scope of what someone could do. Then the next level would be such as a final development plan, that would come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, same thing, where everybody within that threshold is notified, can make public comment, come before you. So again, that's how it's currently drafted. If there's an appetite to do something different, we can definitely discuss that.
Just for clarification, you went through the administrative, the lot lines, the parking lot, the material substitution. Can you call out kind of the bullets for the, the director level, the ART?
You're saying the minor project?
The minor project, yes.
So minor project, then that is what we were looking at before, which is 3,500 square feet or less, additions of that 2,500 square feet or less, modifications of not more than 25% of individual building facades, signs, landscaping, parking and other site-related improvements that do not involve the construction of a new principal building, accessory structures and uses and parking plans when not associated with an FDP.
So I think that-
Those are the items that would go to ART, the administrative review team.
And I think there was some concern about what was in that bucket.
That's on page 36 of your code compared then with administrative approvals, which So on the screen is what would go to the administrative review team.
So then Ms. Fox, did you want to look that over? Do you want to have that brought back? What is your desire for?
I just wanna, I want clarification on, on being sure that, that the question being addressed, that, that there's good opportunity for public opinion when it comes to anything, especially at the level of 25%. So it's very hard-
And we could change that percentage if you wanted to. I mean, for reference, the 3,500 square foot for a new building is smaller than the buildings that are located on Bradenton. So I mean, I use the threshold of those buildings are about 4,500 to 5,000 square feet. So even those smaller scale buildings would come before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the intent would be-
Then the parking lot.
Yeah, for clarification, even ART has a public process.
Yes.
So the public can go before, it's just not before this board nor city council.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for your response and obviously we'll continue, we look forward to continue to work with your team, with Ms. Roush and her team and to, you know, get this better than it currently is, but thank you.
Wonderful. I, I just had two items from your earlier comments. I don't know if you were in the room when we discussed the two-story and the 32-foot maximum. There was a request from the commission to change that language to not, not more than two stories or two stories or less and not to exceed 32 feet, to shore up that language a little bit. And then there was a request from Ms. Fox that then went to the rest of the commission that waivers were, and I don't want to put words in our mouths, but we would err on the side of waivers coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So if you wanted to offer clarification or?
Yeah, that we would continue to allow people to make their requests, but knowing that there is significant body of evidence and discussion that building height as a waiver request would be scrutinized heavily and not necessarily granted, so.
So the process for asking for a waiver will still exist as it does across the city. However, that that would be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and as a matter of, I don't want to say rule, but as a standard, when applications for waivers come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are provided with a planning report that includes history and the discussions that we are having about not more than and the stress that we're putting on that two-story plus 32-foot would be included in that.
Okay. Well, you know, our position is that we just don't want something like an expansion to go through without, you know, discussion in the neighborhood. So I, I think that we have a responsibility and a duty to ensure that there's a process in place to safeguard, I guess, our rights, or the rights to our properties that we're fighting for currently. On the issue of the language, whether it's a maximum, I guess, two-story or maximum 32, I guess the issue that we had, or some of the members of our community had is whichever, which I think that the, the commission, you know, have discussed and some of the points that, that were raised earlier about the whichever language. And it was not sure, I mean, some, some of the comments were, well, can someone build a three-story and, and under, oh, say it's 32 feet? Although the language does say, you know, maximum two-story and again, whichever is less and then it'll 32. So we just wanted to, to be sure, to be clear that there's no ambiguity, that no one can come back tomorrow and say, well, they said, yeah, two-story max, but all whichever is less, but we're gonna build a three-story 32 feet. Now, I don't think anyone would want to do that, but we just wanted to, just want to be clear on that so we don't have to come back here five years from now and, you know, raising hell.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And we understand your, your concern and we appreciate your participation and other members of your community's participation in the public process. It certainly is appreciated.
Sure, thank you.
And I guess the only other comment about the waivers. There are review criteria for granting a waiver that talk about the waiver meeting the spirit and intent of the community plan, the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, the MUR Design Guidelines and applicable zoning code requirements. So you would be reviewing that as part, and a waiver would come before Planning and Zoning Commission. So again, there's that public review piece of that, there's criteria in which you're critically reviewing people's requests for that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Hello.
Would you like for me to repeat all the, my name and address and all? Okay. Just a follow, Mr. Boggs, I just had one quick follow-up question to Jean's earlier question about the, like the current uses and then the future uses. We've gone through, and thank you for doing this, we've gone through most iterations of what could happen. The only one that I think we haven't addressed yet is, let's say that there's a, a current building with, that for instance, has a office in it, but under the current zoning code, it allows as a, as another possible allowable use, it allows it to be like a hospital or something like that. When, so that's current zoning. I guess in the future zoning with MUR 4, is there a circumstance where that hospital would still be allowed under MUR 4? Or does that use cease to exist since that building that was already in existence did not have a hospital in it? I can clarify if that didn't make sense, or if you need me to repeat the question.
So I, I think I understand what you're asking. Today it has an office in it. The MUR 4 zoning is adopted. It continues operating as an office, but at some point in the future, they say we want instead to be a hospital.
Exactly. And SO is open today, let's say that current file is for, that MUR 4 is adopted.
Mr. Boggs.
It turned off quickly on me. They could change from one, if they maintained in a permitted use that is existing today, they could change from that use to another permitted use under CC after the MUR is adopted. But if there were, for example, use-specific standards, once they change, they would have to comply with those use-specific standards under the MUR 4. So I, I assume that you pulled like the hospital and office examples kind of, did you pull those from the code directly or is that just illustrative?
Your microphone, sir.
Yeah, so SO zoning does currently allow, I think, a hospital as a, as a use. It doesn't seem like an applicable use to this area at all, but I'm just thinking 10 years down the road, if somebody plows over all the buildings and says this would be a great place for a hospital, if they maintain a building there and its office, but then they say they want to convert it to a hospital, is that allowed? Unlikely scenario, but could potentially happen, just wanted to be clear.
It would be, but they would be subject to use-specific zoning standards.
Which wouldn't exist in the Muir, Muir 4 code, since there is no hospital.
So clarification.
So there are- So there are use-specific standards for hospitals, for example. So they would be subject to those.
So I, I believe, and please help me if I get this wrong, if we have suburban office that allows for, and I'm going to take a different item than a hospital, just for illustration of point, that allows for exactly three uses: gas stations, grocery stores, and office buildings. Those are the, the only three under SO for the use of this conversation. And MUR 4 allows for office buildings, mixed use, residential, and those are the only three uses. Office is the only one, the only use that's shared across the two. The building was built under SO. It has been used as an office, has only been used as an office, and the rezoning takes place, and now it's MUR 4. Is there a consideration for a deprivation of property rights since office use is continued, that's what it's been used for, if now that same building that has been perpetually in use wants to now convert either to a convenience store or a gas station?
I would say that there is not a concern about, I would argue that a person is not deprived of property rights by not being able to make that switch in uses. However, they would be, if the code allowed them to go from one formerly permitted use to another, so long as they continued the existing, so long as they had been continuing that existing use, they would be required to abide by the use-specific standards, for example, for gas stations. The other safety valve in this existing uses issue is if you go down to D in this section, it talks about expansion of existing uses. So if you're going from, for example, an office to a hospital, that would, in all likelihood, entail an expansion of space, in which case you then come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission that is looking to make sure that those three criteria are satisfied, that there's not a substantially, a substantial detrimental effect on adjacent lots, that it complies with all of your parking sign or other regulations, and that it otherwise complies with reasonable conditions imposed by the PNC. So there would be an opportunity to look at expansion, but just changes without expansion would not come back or be prohibited.
So since I believe, and Commission, I'm looking to the six of you, since I believe that the, the reason for allowing for the continued use, that non-conforming caveat, is to ensure that we're not depriving people of property rights, and as a change from a previously non-conforming but not yet engaged or not continuously engaged use is not depriving someone of a property right, then can we put language in the code that allows for a non-conforming use where that non-conforming use is not allowed in the new zoning? So if the office space is no longer allowed, they can continue using the office space. If the grocery store is not allowed in the new, and they're already operating as a grocery store, they can continue operating as a grocery store, but they can't change from a grocery store to a hospital, hospital to an office, et cetera, where that use was not the original use or not the continuous use.
So the same timetable, that if I stopped this use today, right, it has a shelf life?
12 months.
Can I apply that same timetable to the other uses currently collected under CC?
So that is my understanding of the way that this is drafted, and the way, so I'll answer your question, Ms. Cole. As a legal matter, it is my opinion that a person does not, is not deprived of property rights if they want to change from a, you know, previously permitted office use and go to something that was previously permitted but now isn't. Denying them the ability to go to something that now isn't permitted would not deprive them of a property right from a legal perspective. Now, to my knowledge, the existing use provisions that this is modeled on and that are currently existing in the Bridge Street District were arrived at because when the area-wide rezoning was done for the Bridge Street District, a number of property owners were concerned over those changes, and that the existing use was done to accommodate those expectations, which may have, which may not have been legal expectations per se. Maybe they got financing at some point based upon a list of uses, even though they only ultimately engaged in one. I don't know that history, but I think that that may be why the existing use provision is somewhat broader than what the legal, you know, actionable property right is.
And I believe for this application, and I'll go back, you know, Ms. Fox has made this comment a few times tonight, we are more, we are scrutinizing more of those parcels adjacent to the residential neighborhoods. So to ensure that substantial use doesn't change from something that has never been engaged in before, and therefore no expectation nor property right engaged in, applied, then we want to make sure that we are protecting both the property rights of the owner and the expectations of the residential property owners adjacent to those uses.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Matthew Cole. I'm here with Nationwide Realty Investors. Can everyone hear me okay? So about a month ago, we came to agreement with the Civic Association and Dublin Planning, and that took roughly a year to come to what we thought was an agreement. And what's the sign of a good agreement is our good compromise is everyone's a little bit unhappy and a little bit happy. And for most of this meeting, especially the first half, I, I was very pleased with what the residents said initially. And then the second half of this meeting, there has seemed to be a chipping away of what we had agreed to, or what we felt we had agreed to. We thought we were agreeing to, you know, the compromise that was put up on the list and substantially what was in the rest of the MUR 4 code. And in several areas, this has been slowly chipped away, like with the solar panels and with rooftop equipment. And I, you know, I'm a little concerned also with the, the targeting of this property and not looking at things as a whole, and it's everything about, you know, if, if you are adjacent to residential, and we're going to make exceptions for, in essence, again, because this is the only non-developed property in the MUR 4 that impact this property more than anyone else. And I am concerned that we are getting further and further away from what we felt we had agreed to.
So, Mr. Cole, you mentioned a couple of items, the solar panels and the rooftop equipment. Were there other items that you were looking to seek clarification on?
Until I see the changes, but there was discussion. So there was discussion over, you know, loading docks and where those could be. And with all the, the, you know, I won't say fight, but the back and forth between NRI and the neighbors and planning with setback, building setback, and where parking lots could be, and how much, you know, landscape buffer there needed to be, I, yes, on the next draft, I will be reading in detail, because if now it's, it was, you know, piece by piece by piece, it felt like what had been agreed to had been chipped away, the spirit of what we had agreed to had been chipped away. It was our understanding that, you know, other areas of the code wouldn't be substantially changed or chipped. Nothing has been, you know, we've been looking at each other with each discussion, okay, how significant is this? I think we're okay. When you look at it as a whole, and, you know, when revisions are made and circulated, it's my fear that it will, you know, from the beginning, we have said we just want to maintain enough flexibility to make it economically viable, and what I'm, what I've heard tonight is that flexibility that we thought we had come to a compromise on slowly draw in.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Cole. And I, and I believe what we're looking to do and what we've worked to do tonight is to make sure that those broad strokes, the, we agreed to, you know, working the compromise between the, the neighborhood and NRI, is make sure the language reflects that, to make sure that when we're talking rooftop equipment, it was called out there, but it was a little ambiguous. When we're looking at solar panels, you know, how does, is that classified as rooftop equipment? So removing the ambiguity.
I, I understand that, but where, at least what I've heard in the discussions is it's not just a removal of any ambiguity, it's 32 feet, and if you have, you know, a vent that's 32 feet and 1 inch, you have to go for a waiver. And that's, you know, a, a version of this code has been out for a while. Those things haven't changed, except tonight.
So Jenny, I would just seek clarification. So the 32 height, our draft in the OneDrive had 32 feet, including, and so when was that language added? I don't think that language was added tonight, but correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I, I guess, and it wasn't intended to be in a deceitful way. It was the discussion of mechanicals came up as part of a previous discussion, so that was how it was proposed. It wasn't meant to restrict you, your parcel further. It was, in general, looking at mechanical screening being included in the, in the overall height, because that's something that was discussed previously. I understand where, I mean, I guess I understand now that we're talking about it like that, how it could be perceived that way. That really wasn't the intent of including that. It was, I'm trying to take all the pieces, fit them together, so.
Thank you. Mr. Schnur.
Can I ask you, sir, was it your intention with the discussions and negotiations with respect to the 32 feet, that you would be permitted to have mechanical equipment above the 32 feet?
That, that was our understanding. Was it, you know, a pipe here, an AC there?
Yeah, but, you know, I'm sure you appreciate that the language can't say a pipe here and this there, so.
Sure, sure.
I mean, just trying to get to what your understanding was.
Going back to what Mr. Christensen has said, you know, from the beginning of my discussions with him, it was looming, right? That was, I think I've heard the word looming 15, 20 times. I don't, I don't think a mechanical on a building would, would qualify as looming if it was, you know, 3 feet above the, you know, the, the edge line of the roof. I don't think that adds to the looming nature of the building, so I, no, I thought it was our understanding that the 32 feet was as it's been measured through the rest of the code.
So it was, it was your understanding and your intent in the discussions that that limitation, 32 feet, whatever, it turns out to be 32 feet, would not include mechanical equipment, solar panels, which could be above the 32-foot level? That, that was what your expectation was in the negotiations?
That was the expectation.
Thank you.
And what I will say is, it, it wasn't just one thing. It was, you know, it was, if, if that had been the only thing that had changed, but it's been the discussion tonight that has seemed to slowly chip away at what we thought we had agreed to.
Well, and-
And I guess we won't truly know until we see all the revisions that go in.
It's, it's my understanding that this will all be, you'll have another opportunity. This will all, you know, we, I don't think any of us can cite chapter or verse what the language is going to look like. So it is, this will come back to us, and you'll have another opportunity, as will everyone, to see the language again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Looking back to staff and commission, any other discussion on these items?
Yeah, so, I mean, again, I don't, we didn't look through the guidelines yet. I do feel like we had some good discussion about things to incorporate in there, not to paint, make this painstaking, but every other agenda from now till the end of the year is packed. So if we can muster and power through and do this as efficiently as possible, I would highly recommend that, just because we have a large caseload, I'm sorry. So, and again, we can be pretty quick, because it's, it's not as large of a document, but-
Guidelines are only 24 pages, so if we can go, and there are pictures in the guidelines. So if we want to take the same approach, so Ms. Roush, if you have the energy to lead us through, and I owe you-
I'll try, I'll muster.
-a caffeinated beverage of your choosing, if you could lead us through the, the guideline discussion, I think that will facilitate the, the, the meeting.
So I think similar to the code, we have the applicability and the overview section, which I think starts to get to some of the things that Ms. Fox was bringing up about, really what the overall intent for this area was. And it really, the first couple of sections within here talk about the larger context and conditions, and the relationship to the de-cap plan, and then it does start to break down within each section what the various sub-districts are and the character with which is supposed to be included in those. So again, this includes all the sub-areas, so even for the sake of moving forward, like, we wouldn't even have, if we didn't want to get into the semantics of 1 through 3, we could remove that from the guidelines at this point, just as a, as a thought, so we don't have to be-
There, there's not very much.
Yeah, agreed. I just didn't know what the comfort level was with that. So, I mean, particularly for MUR 4, we have, and that's on page 7, we have a graphic of the area in which we're talking about, and it gives some character and characteristics of what should be included in there. Again, based on the discussion tonight, it seems like we could probably beef that up a little bit more to outline what the, what the area plan says and gives that visual sort of picture in your mind of what that looks like and what the intention of this district is, if, if-
So pausing, pausing there, the, the text specific to MUR 4 on page 7 and the images there, are there discussion items that the, the Commission would like to go into? We go then into the building designs with some kind of inspirational type images? Ms. Fox?
You know, I, I think what we've learned from Bridge Street is that you can write a code, but unless you have aspirational descriptions, and they're very large and very colorful, and they're, and, and they create the picture of what you're hoping to get, and then adding the pictures of a variety of different expectations kind of gives character and personality to the code, and also because I think area commissioners are citizens, that I know I struggled with trying to interpret code and not understanding what the endpoint is, and I would just suggest that, for me, as I read these guidelines, we can just do a, just a, you know, probably a, a good re-edit of this and make that happen that way, so that anybody ever sitting up here says, well, this is what we intended, this is what it's supposed to look like, it just gives us a guideline. That's what I'd like to see happen.
I would agree with that, and I would like to see some of the images, some of those design guidelines have the pitched roofs. It appears that pretty much all of our examples are flat-roofed buildings, and they're, they're also somewhat larger in scale than I, I think what some of the areas are expecting, so if we could incorporate some of the smaller footprint buildings as well. So looking back to the rest of the Commissioners' design guidelines. So looking back to the rest of the commissioners' design guidelines.
We can look at... And this applies to all those districts. So again, I think we can really get to the character of the various districts within the... In the guidelines and make sure we're pinpointing, character-wise, what that... What's that intended to look like? So that's the first section. And then the subsequent sections get into the specifics related to building design and site design. So again, we had a lot of good discussion about some of those topics as part of the code and how we could incorporate some additional language within there. So again, I don't know how... If you have other things to offer related to building design other than what we've talked about tonight, I'm definitely all ears for that. And as you said, we can look through here and just sort of make sure we're incorporating all of the pieces and parts signs. Definitely something we can look at and see how that helps impact the character.
So I would look at the discussion from this evening on the materials and where the appropriate use of some of those materials would be and using inspirational images to illustrate when that would be viewed as acceptable. Okay. Ms. Fox?
I just, I think on the building design, I, you know, I'd... Sometimes it helps to kind of look at some descriptions of other master plan developments. And when they talk about building design, I guess my... Once again, my concern would be just to say that your building design should have four-sided architecture and avoid single-material monolithic wall planes doesn't paint a picture. It just tells you what you can't do. So I'm looking for descriptions of telling you what you should do or how you could do it or what we would love to see you do. Those kinds of guidelines force you into creative thought instead of pulling you back away from what you can't do. So I think I'm just looking for a different way to approach it and that sort of thing. And I, you know, whatever the other commissioners might think about how to get somebody's creative juices going on this.
Mr. Fishman?
Need a comment? I agree. I think when Ms. Fox brought in during the Bridge, one of the Bridge Street zonings, the pictures of what Pete Edwards did in another part of the city, I said to myself, "Wow, this looks nothing like what the plan looks like that we're doing, and this sure looks better." So I think that's important. So that was a real good example. That was kind of almost shocking when you looked at that and said, "Wow, this is what they describe, but this is what they're going to end up with." And so I think that really helps. And of course, we're all familiar with the plan with all the pictures and all that, and I think that is an idea. I think we, like we said earlier, we can't really rely on the next generation of planners or the... They might have a completely different outlook. So I think a good idea for them to see what people have in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Yeah, so again, I think we could just take an overall look at the whole set of guidelines if there's nothing else more specific that you want us to look at and see if there's... What else can be added or beefed up? But if you have other things, I'm all ears.
Mr. Way?
Thank you. So just an observation. You know, as an overview, the design guidelines, I think, capture a lot of intent, but there's more detail about the subject matter in the actual, you know, other material. So it needs... There needs to be some more mirroring of the two documents, I think. And we talked about, you know, illustrating different things, like, you know, with parking. Like, there's different ways of putting landscape in parking lots. That would, you know, maybe this is where we need to pump it up. And just, there's just a lot of statements in the code that I don't think are reflected in the guidelines, and I think they could. Because guidelines, to me, are, it's kind of like the... It's the graphic depiction of what you want to achieve, right? And I think the imagery that you have in here is good, but it's, again, very high level. I think you could actually put in specific examples of things that are talked about that you want to achieve in the code in the guidelines.
I would agree with that. And the call-out that I would have is the specificity. We have a lot of applicants who come before us, and they say, "Well, you know, we understand what you're saying, but don't really know how to apply. We don't want to design from the dais, but, for instance, on the image that you're seeing here, if that plane wall where you see the string lights were before us, we would say it's plain." And so when we call out, you know, no stretches to be... Then the details of what we do want. You know, these are inspirational. Of course, we're not designing. This is kind of the look and feel that we're looking for when we're looking at articulation of facades, when we're looking at mixed products between primary and secondary materials. What does that look like on a building? So that the people who are looking to read the code can meet the code, and the people who are looking for the art. There's a science and there's an art. So illustrating the art for them in depictions that allow us to say, "Yes, that, that..." Planning staff, city council, Planning and Zoning Commission, ARB, you know, all of us together say, "Yes, this is what we're looking for in this area," whether that be MUR 4 or other areas of the city. Mr. Schneer?
My recollection is the historic Dublin guidelines have a lot more specificity. Now, maybe it merits it, given the unique nature, but to all our points, there were a lot more places you could look and say, "This is what we want. This is what we don't want." Maybe that could be used as a template.
Yeah, we could definitely refer to... And you're right, that does have a lot more detail and specificity, given the nature of that. But I think there's a lot of good lessons learned from that and how to incorporate that here. So that's some really great feedback to know how far to push this and take this as we move forward, so.
Thank you. Other call-outs? Seeing none, staff, other call-outs?
No, this has been helpful. I appreciate your patience and thoroughness in the discussion, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So our agenda does have motions on... Has there been a request to table? Are...
Yeah, can we table them? Would you mind that? Thank you.
Do we need a motion for tabling?
Yes, please.
I will entertain a motion to table the three items.
Motion to table all three.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Ms. Beal. Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone who happened to join us online this evening, thank you for your attention and for spending a Thursday night with us. Looking back to staff for communications this evening? Yes, we do have communications this evening.
Hold on one second. Our meeting's not over yet. Sorry, hang tight for one sec. I'll be done. Real quick, so three quick things. One, we have another new person who's represented on your nice bio in front of you. But Taylor is another planner, new planner that just started this week. So she is a Planner 1, and she's come from Hilliard. She's hiding behind Nikki. And she's joined us as a Planner 1 in our office, and we're excited to have her. So you'll be seeing her and her as applications come before you. So that's... So welcome to you, Taylor.
Welcome, Taylor. Is it Mullinax?
Mullinax, yep.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Then the second item is the Clerk's Office should have reached out to you about connecting, I think, with city council members. I don't know all the background about that. So check your emails. And if you haven't contacted Jamie or Jenny or Judy, whomever sent you that request, please make sure you do so.
It may be entertaining to know that my voicemail came through saying they are scheduling for 2:00 a.m., which I was entertained by.
Decline, right? And then the last thing, as I mentioned, and Nikki can maybe talk to that a little further if she wanted to, but we do have a significant number of agenda items that are coming forward before the end of the year. And if possible, looking at a special meeting in November.
Yeah, so the tentative special meeting date would be November 16th. It's a Tuesday. Right, unfortunately, due to the holidays, we just don't have enough meetings to process the amount of development our office has seen this year.
So just a call-out from my side. I'm in an industry where we support retailers through Black Friday, so it's a little packed from about the 22nd, 23rd of November through about the 5th of December. So just to call out, Mr. Supalak, I may be calling on you to help me there.
Fair enough. And I don't think we're looking for a commitment tonight, so I guess please just look at your calendars. When we convene next week, we can talk about whether or not November 16th looks like a viable option. If not, we also have an alternate date.
Is it Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah. Great. Thanks, everyone.
Any communication from the commission? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for spending another exciting Thursday night at Planning and Zoning Commission, and we'll see you...